This is the attorney. Hi, this is Liam. If you haven't met Liam before, he's sitting in for Corlin.
No, the applicant, sorry, not attorney applicant.
I don't think our applicant is here. No, this over here is Tiffany.
No, I know, I'm bad.
I knew you were Jeff Burton, correct? I met you the other day. Nice to see you again.
Obviously, the work session, and he had stuff to come back with. We can work it here for him to be.
I have not heard from him since the last meeting, so I was just assuming that he knew to be here.
Oh, alright.
It's been, I mean, that was the motion that was made, so.
We can do our own work.
You could be a little more candid, too, which might be helpful.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you're comfortable, I could just kind of dive off, take a diving point and start moving in.
I think we're gonna do the flag.
Oh, we do if we're gonna actually do it right.
Can we do it at one second? Alright, now we're done. Let's do what you do. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Looks like Mr. Wampler's in the waiting room.
So, hit the admit button for Commissioner Wampler. Perfect. Good, thanks. Okay, so I've got a few emails. Thank you for following up with notes and emails on the results of last meeting. If you guys are okay with it, I'd just like to go through, I think all of these bullet points are really astute, very easy to get through. I'd like to go through each of them, maybe just address them.
You say the bullet points, each of the inputs that were sent in to you?
Yep.
Okay.
Hello, we were hoping you would make it.
Yes, yeah, sorry, there were a couple wrecks near Salt Lake, rubber necks, the entire interstate, apologies.
No worries, we're just getting started, so if you guys are okay with it, I'd just like to read through each of these and address each one. I've got a bullet point list that I am working on to keep notes and try and figure out how to make sure we get the areas of concern written into the development agreement.
So you can pile the thoughts, and then sort of work on that, just make sure, if you have multiples, you can pile.
Actually, I just have them all right here, but they are, I've got notes off to the side, so I can distill them down a little bit. So, first question, or first statement, this came across from a few different people. Short-term rentals need to be removed as a primitive use. Is that from any part of the development, including the vehicle-oriented commercial area? Or is that just the residential side of the development?
I would say from every part of the development.
Okay, everybody agree?
I was in for the first work session when I was decided.
I see no benefit to anyone, to the valley, to the general plan, anywhere by short-term rentals. And I think the reason, a big part of the reason why some infrastructure employees who have lived in the valley for a long time, or have come to the valley and tried to work their way up, can't buy a home because of short-term rentals. It's not unique to the valley. It was worse where I came from 12 years, 13 years ago. So propagating that in any way, I personally think is contrary to the general plan.
And I think in this instance, I may have contrary, use the help commercial to keep stimulation, because we don't have hotel housing there, but that's not for this. I think you can't, because of the way you fund, you don't, you, short-term, doesn't matter, we get it, you can't, you wouldn't do short-term under.
Yeah, well, I mean, so I'll answer that in two ways. So, any, any part of the project that we might do as workforce housing or affordable housing, anything that, you know, has HUD funds or tax credits or those sorts of things, their, short-term rentals make no sense.
They just, how you have to qualify and do it.
Right, yeah, you have to do income verification, there's a big expense, there's all that compliance, there's no, there's no upside in that whatsoever. You know, for a developer who's doing market rate for rent housing, you know, you could probably get a premium for short-term rentals. That said, we don't do short-term rentals.
I remember you speaking in our meeting that your intention is to not do short-term rentals. So it would assume to me, they did have no problems, there was a requirement, and that says no short-term rentals. So there's no, I mean, it's there.
Yeah, they're going along. So maybe before we get going, could you define for us HUD funds versus tax credits? So I understand, because I heard you say it, one meeting somebody asked you what the price point would be, you know, rent reduced unit up there. I think you said something around 1,500 and around 2,000, different sizes, roughly. So how does that work? You're obviously going to get a tax credit that tops your profitability. If somebody qualifies, their income qualifies, and they rent a $1,500 unit, are they getting any sort of government assistance on top of the tax credit you're getting that lowers the price?
No, generally not, I'm just trying to pull something up here, so if we can, I'll get to the point where I can pull up what the Weaver County rents. But, no, generally, there are, there is tenant-based assistance that exists. Our residents don't typically have that, usually that is, those are controlled by housing authorities, usually those are giving out, given out to, or actually, usually the housing authority holds on to it to use for their own housing, that they do. So we are financing affordable housing through a number of different vehicles. We have affordable housing that we've done without tax credits. And in certain places, and in certain parts of the cycle, we can do that. So we've done that in Salt Lake City at certain points, especially if the, if the interest rates are low, that's when you can get that done. And sometimes that can be favorable, because that, there are less stipulations that go along when you're not using IRS tax credits, and as soon as you keep the depreciation. Right now, and this is gonna likely be important as part of the conversation going forward, right now you really need tax credits, almost everywhere, just because the other costs related, the construction costs and the interest costs right now are so high that it's hard to do affordable housing and make anything pencil without, without tax credits. Generally, almost anyone, if we're getting funding from the state, if we're getting funding from whatever the jurisdiction might be, municipality, they all look to the same, I mean, everyone looks to HUD, and the HUD rents as, and the median income, it's really incomes, right? HUD goes to the American Communities Survey, which is the annual survey that's done between census. And that determines what the area median income is. And then from that, you get the 80% and 60% and 50% of the area median income. So HUD puts out what all of those AMIs are, the different levels. And then, to be affordable, how that's defined is that a family is paying 30% of their income or less for rents and utilities. So for those housing costs, and so that's really what that rent number is. That rent number is 30% of what the area's income is for that 30 or 40 or 50 or 60% level. So that's, that's what it really, and pretty much, because it's national and because it's defined, that's what everybody looks to, you know, no matter what the financing vehicle is.
Okay, any other questions on that? Okay, no short-term rentals anywhere in the development, check. A couple comments, make sure the shoulds or shalls, I just write should when I'm doing a recommendation, just because I don't get to write shall. That's not my purview, but that is, can be yours, and that can be the county commissioner's. So anything that is in your recommendation that is, this should happen, will be reconstructed into this shall happen in a draft development agreement, just so you guys know. So I wanted to make sure that was clear. Let's see, so concerns, so Commissioner Postenby, I think this was yours, concerns about the two.
Yeah, I looked at it from a perspective, if I'm a homeowner and I'm living in those two houses that are like on an island, and it's showing a road, and that road, whether it be there or not, implies that part of it's on my property, and it's access and all that, I'm gonna want a hard boundary.
Yeah.
Right, so to me, it would seem reasonable that there would be a six-foot-high masonry wall.
Would you be okay with an eight-foot-high masonry wall?
Sure.
It's more expensive, but.
Yeah, I'm just a solid boundary between those properties and the development.
Surrounding the app parcels, good.
Since that, since that road going through that property just north of the, of the, you know, the island, is in the form base, do we need to make a variance from the size of that road? Because it seems oversized for that small section.
Help me understand what you mean by the size of it.
Well, what's the size mandated for that road?
I think we'll probably do 66 feet, so form base doesn't mandate the size of residential roads, we just fall back to the county standard.
So it's really traffic plus parking on both sides?
Yeah, so if it is a non-thru street, we do 60 feet, if it's a through street, we'll do 66 feet. Gives a little bit more space for some pedestrian area and some parking. This road could very well be a through street in the future, just depending on where we go. Let me pull this up here. Originally, this was all connected, so it's hard to see.
For the height, be a little hiker.
Yeah, so along Clark Lane, so right now, the plan beyond Clark Lane, that ends at the river right here, would be to go up and connect right into the Osprey Ranch development. And they've got preliminary approval that shows where that connection should go. Eventually, that'll be a direct connection into the Nordic neighborhood. And then, that could come across, I think, coming down to the south of the Temenary Building, without affecting the Temenary Building right here, and then form a direction that would then eventually tie right into this development. See, this road here comes across this way, I'm sorry, comes across that way, tie straight into there, and potentially continue to the east.
Assuming the landowner who has that multi-unit, who doesn't build another unit on his property, which was indicated, he might think he is.
Which one?
A commercial property, there are a few more units that are built, one on the back, one on the side.
Which properties?
That nice building, that nice.
It's where.
Where Zimby Dental, where Matt.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I'm here, so you're talking.
I see what you're saying, yeah, and you're right, yeah, at the very end of that road, if they put buildings there, then obviously we would.
We currently lease, my business partner currently leases that, and before you have that orange line right there that goes through, he currently, the owner, has the right to have to build a building right where that road is. There's no intention to have that road go through there. Now, 50 years, knock it down and put the road through, right? This could be a 50-year play.
Could you go back to that map for a second, I just want to clarify something.
Sure can.
That note on the masonry wall, the intention is it's those two properties here, around those two properties, not just the street.
Okay, perfect, yeah, we'll make sure it gets around there.
Assuming, I guess, assuming the people who own the property want to look at a wall, trees or something.
They have an option.
Option for that, actually, let's, let's make sure we make a note of that.
I wouldn't want to look at it.
No.
But what about the valley?
I'd rather have it than a road going through, but it's, I guess it's up to them.
Eight foot or, let's just say, eight foot or six foot, or, or as may, let's.
Negotiate with the property office.
Yep, or as may be otherwise desired by adjoining property owners, okay.
I've seen those before, they look so weird, I, you know what I mean, like, in these exact situations that he's dealing with, it's like, you could, like, I've seen schools built around parcels, and they put those walls, and it looks like the view, it's an interesting.
As venture.
Yeah.
And if you don't do the wall right, it's gonna look like the storage units that are up there, that nobody seems to like the design of, up there in the Eden Corway, so.
Another, another reason they shouldn't be built at all.
Sure, so actually, let's talk about that really briefly, because that was a comment, I think, Commissioner Postenby, that you brought up as well. If the overwhelming desire is for, I mean, if the majority vote is for denial, then vote for denial. But I think it's smart to be thinking about these things. So what I have seen, and what I've advised planning commissioners to do in the past, is if your desire is for the county commissioners to know that you don't want this to happen, then vote for denial, but give a caveat to that that says, but if you do approve it, we don't want it approved unless it's approved this way. It gives the planning, or the county commission some direction, whereas they'd be working with a blank slate if you just say denial. Then they're gonna say, well, what the heck are they thinking? Well, they might, they might not, but they'll say, what the, they might say, what the heck are they thinking? I guess we'll make the rules of, and that's probably not.
That's just groundwork.
Okay, so that's why, I like what we're doing here. If, if we put together some good rules for the development, things that Chris feels like he could sign off on, but you still don't want it to happen, it's still within your purview to deny it, or to recommend it out to the commissioner.
And that's where, as to the commission, however we vote in the majority, is, are we against form-based? Are we against the applicant with the applicant's group? And that, to summarize, it felt like that a number of us had more of an issue with form-based and how it's taking shape than to actually add the application. But I thought, I might summarize.
I sent out a summary today.
I got it.
I have a real problem with my email. Well, I don't keep out of it.
I got it, I got it three times.
Oh, good, I got it. If they got it, then, then we got it.
It was basically an idea, this, this is not congruent with the master plan, with the general plan.
You put some really good findings in there for denial.
It's also not consistent with the subdivision standard. It could be built somewhere else, but the problem with this is, it's taking two village areas and combining them. But another village area, so now we got a city area, and that's not contemplated by the general, general plan, it's all small villages. And this violates that whole. I have a question on that. I looked through the general plan, and I saw numerous times villages, 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 but I never saw a definition, small villages. Maybe in there, I may have missed the adjectives in your small villages.
There is one spot, one sentence that does refer to small villages. Question is, is.
Does it define that?
What's a small village, right? From downtown Salt Lake, a small village would definitely be this, in fact, this would be very small.
Because what I struggle with, with the number of homes or the number of units, what's small, what's big?
Right.
I don't know.
So when we were contemplating the form-based zone, and whether it's the form-based or not, when we're contemplating the village idea, we were hoping to make sure we had villages that were large enough to bring in those transferable development rights from the, the other areas of the valley floor. And Jeff, I think Christian Barber's been pretty student, saying we're not gonna get 100% of those development rights wiped out unless there's some pretty extreme laws made, and I think that's the case. If we get 50% of those development rights moved off of the valley floor and into these villages, I think we'd be pretty lucky. But that's still a few thousand residential dwelling units, and we need to figure out what that looks like. Because if you don't like a few thousand residential dwelling units clustered into a village, then maybe we don't like villages. Maybe we're okay with them just being spread out.
Back to the general plan.
The general plan.
General plan contemplated overall, rural, and villages, and small villages. So we're gonna take this density from somewhere, and we're gonna move it into things we call villages, that are little type villages, they're not cities, they're not great big mounds of high-density heavy. That was what contemplated in 2016, that was what is sold in the program. And it was also contemplated that, okay, we've got a lot of stuff to move around, if they can't fit in one place and still be small, then these will be around, where we, it is not limited to those areas identified in the general plan. It was contemplated there are other areas will be needed somewhere, and the market will decide where those.
And I think I recall maybe seven-ish areas referred to in the general plan. I brought that up earlier this year, saying, well, let's identify those seven and get some scope so that this doesn't become an issue where Eden is the only place. And it came back, I believe it came back saying, from the county commission, well, you're too close, we're too close to incorporation, so we're not gonna do anything like that until we know when incorporation's gonna happen, right? Okay. You can make the same argument with this zoning, that let's just wait and see. They're collecting signatures right now, and they want to get it on the November ballot. And I can tell you, it's a referendum on form-based zoning as much as anything else, it's in that basket. I don't know how this development would play in that.
It says referendum, very specific legal definition of referendum, what do you mean?
Meaning that, that.
They don't like this, and so they're.
Correct, form-based, not that this project, form-based zoning is not popular, I don't believe, with the incorporation crew, and I'm not part of that, and I don't even support it, but my takeaway from listening to that, and listening to people who have spoke in that context, is that form-based zoning is viewed negatively. And that's, that's largely because of what happened with Eden Crossing, how the perception is the original Eden Village expanded, and now this is another expansion. So with the county commission saying, let's not identify the other five zones until we know what's gonna happen with incorporation, because if so, then it's those folks who are gonna do it on their own, one way or another or not. So this is kind of that, right? Going, you know, encroaching out somewhat and doing something that doesn't exist today in the face of a vote in a few months, the same vote, that they didn't want to identify the other village areas, which could take the burden off of Eden, Newtown, for moving density to, using development rights. So it's kind of like, you know what I mean, it's just like, one or the other guys, you can't have it both ways, where you're doing it, but you're not doing it, right? If you have a reason not to do it over here, you ought to have a reason not to do it over here, but it's kind of what I said.
Please, pardon? I have a question for you.
Okay.
So as we talk about, we've got, how many things left to put up there, we've got population, how many homes? We're looking, I've heard the number 16,000 dwelling units. And we are, how many today?
You're gonna make me, we have another 6,000 left.
If you used every development.
If you use, we'll never.
I agree, I.
Take a lot to do.
And, yeah, it's not likely to happen. So in your mind, how do you, just your comment of villages, and I haven't read the general plan maybe, so I'm trying to understand your mind. How would you propose those 6,000 or less units, whatever, if you don't put them in a pocket and you sprawl, how would?
This is different from sprawl.
I'm just asking the how, how, how do you put 6,000 units?
Okay, let me draw a picture of, for example, your friends, your, okay, Armors Fields, Little Village, Armors Fields, Little Village. That's what I envisioned, because I think that's what people had the picture of in 2016, when they went along with this general plan, okay? We're not gonna have houses everywhere, the measles work. We're gonna kind of move these houses into little nodes, I think they were called nodes originally, or villages. So if some of them are, yeah.
But will there be a commercial involved in any of that?
Yeah, there could be, because you look over there, they got a bakery, they got a little store, I'm looking at that as an example. And so you can have, and I think that's one reason form-based maybe came along, is it's multi-use, right? The ability to have a little commercial with housing above. For the operators, the bakery, or whatever.
And I'm just trying to ask questions of the how, I'm just trying to understand kind of where you're coming from. So the how, how big is, how many people is in a small village, and how do you, maybe questions, how big is that small? 300, 400, or is it, one's 2,000, one's 100, like, I don't.
I can't answer that.
Sure.
Okay, but I know what we've got now, Newtown Eaton is identified as this thing, and we're moving density in there. And Eden Crossing is that kind of a thing, we're moving density in there. And if we put this one between them, now we join them, now we have something big.
And Newtown and Eaton, help me understand what you mean, Newtown and Eden Crossing are the same thing? Help me understand what you mean by two different things.
Just physically, physically. Well, there is a, there is open space between Eden Crossing and.
Today.
Today.
What would you define as Newtown? What would you define as Newtown Eaton? Where's, where's the boundary of Newtown Eaton right now?
I don't know, I'm thinking, okay, here's Eden Crossing, a bunch of density going in there, a bunch of commercial, multi over here.
Like grocery store westward, is that what you're thinking?
Beyond the grocery store west, eastward, okay?
Old Town Eaton?
Old Town Eaton is kind of, well, it's kind of separate.
Kind of, like separated by like 50 yards?
For example, Old Town Eaton, now we've been moving density from there, up a little bit east or north of the highway. And so the, the, the sunny field will be a big open space. Okay, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Here, if we put this proposal in this spot, we eliminate the open space between two things that are gonna be kind of dense. Yeah, I don't, I didn't see it as a way, this shouldn't be built somewhere else. If it can be surrounded by some open space, because this is big, this has the potential to be 600, 700 people in there.
Excuse me.
600 and something people right now.
Gentlemen, I'm not able to see the drawing.
Just for a, just for a scale we're able to think of, Wolf Creek has about 2,500 people in there right now, the Wolf Creek development.
So, in my mind, I'd like, why is everybody so upset? Well, because all of a sudden, this rural thing is turning into not rural at all, and it's not village at all, because now we're joining all of this stuff together, and now we've got a whole bunch of high-density population here. And that's not what the valley people envisioned when they went for the general plan. So I don't think it meets the general plan. At the end of the subdivision standard, the tax about senior things, first of sky, meet the general plan, it's gotta be compatible with the existing neighborhood. It's not, it's, can't have an adverse effect of existing development there. And I think these two houses, now they're gonna, they're surrounded on three sides, we're gonna have an eight-foot wall around them. That's pretty adverse effect. Now, if we tapered to them, okay, that's consistent with the general plan. If we dance off the cliff to a couple of lots there in the AD3, I don't know how big those lots are.
I can tell you.
How many, how many nodes do we have today, Charlie? I know, I mean, how many projected nodes in the general plan?
Seven, I think.
Well, we took, they, we're talking about taking basin, or the one over at Old Snow Basin Road away, and leaving one.
I mean, they're still there.
In our last thing, they talked about, when we were talking about those houses and the hotel units and all the TDRs and all that, they said, hey, we had a node planned for right here, Old Snow Basin Road, the commission doesn't.
But it's my understanding that node could have been down at the intersection of Trappers, where Snow Basin owns all sorts of.
I was just relaying it.
Because that wasn't defined well, and that's what I asked for earlier this year. Let's put some definition at this point in time to these other five nodes, so that it isn't just, you know, so there's some preemptive work that's been done, so that we don't get into these kind of problems. And that's when it came back saying, no, hard no, because of the pending incorporation.
I understand that, so for, for math's sake, if there's seven, and there's 6,000 left, I understand that there's not, it's not likely that those will all go to another, I understand that, but it's fair with me for math's sake. If it's seven, it's essentially just under 1,000 things in each node.
Yeah, and that's why it was always contemplated, because I was there, I was in all the discussions, that there will be additional. And we move on, there'll be a need for more of these little village nodes somewhere. And it wasn't the time where they would, there was always contemplated, there would be additional.
For example, if there's 2,500 in Wolf Creek, how many are you gonna be there once Cobay is built out?
It's a good, well, Cobay doesn't have a town itself, but there are close to 2,000 lots, 2,000, 1,500 lots that are vacant in that area.
And Cobay hasn't a bunch that, really small lots, so it wouldn't be a bunch, but there's a bunch of small lots that are.
There's 2,459 total vacant entitlements that are out there, I would say 50% of them are in Wolf Creek.
Built and ready? What are you saying, entitlement, are you talking about like a finished lot?
It's, it's either a finished plot and lot, or it's a lot that a development agreement allows.
No wire and sewer.
So in Wolf Creek, those are all finished lots, and it should have been water and sewer, but because the water.
There's somewhere an allocated.
Overallocated, right, they had to put a moratorium on it, sounds like it's flown now.
I have water during moratorium, I live on the bridge, but some people don't.
Right.
My, my point is, is where I, I understand, and you were there, that's why I'm asking questions, I don't try to push back. But I'm trying to see, you could go from eight hundred to two thousand in a node, and to your point, but Wolf Creek's a node. And newly, you know, what is it, Eden Crossing is in there, or whatever it's called, what's it, what's the bottom called? Newtown, Newtown Eaton, that really is going to become like two close rocks hitting upon, and the ripples are getting really.
Merging together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Plus two, you showed this figure a lot, this was in the package last time. So is this the interpretation then, the general plan has those seven red circles, right?
Eight of them.
Eight of them, I counted seven, maybe my eyes are bad. Is that the same area of this circle? Because if I read it correctly, then this development that we're talking about, Cowboy Partners, is in the village area that you, is defined in the general plan.
Yeah, and this.
Am I missing something here?
This is a, this is a hard distinct, distinction to make. This circle is obviously not intended to be the boundary of the town. It is intended to represent the quarter mile walking distance from the center of town. Obviously, the configuration or the shape of, of the village area is going to end up being different based on individual decision making. But it is intended to say this general area here. Here's a circle, as the crow flies, this is a quarter mile, somewhere in here, in this general area, we should have a village.
All right, so if I'm, if I'm saying back what you told me, then, right? The intention of this circle in the handout that we got is to imply that the development is in a village area that's defined in the general plan.
That hasn't approved, true, really.
And, and I think.
How did that circle move from the general plan?
It didn't, somebody's lying when they say that.
So, so, but Charlie mentioned.
But I have heard it, or part of the court case.
You're supposed to take the vision of the general plan, not so much the details.
General, blur, blur your heads.
So like, yeah, like, okay, here's this, but I think that's a, for example, and it can be whatever we come up with a plan. So this, this, this was a two-sided thing with Eden Crossing, right? Because they tried to say, well, it's outside of that circle, and John's saying, doesn't matter, it's really the vision. Which in, it leads to my point that I wanted to mention, is that I don't think that this fits well in good planning. And I think Charlie, if you could elaborate on what, when you think of a downtown space or a center of a, a village or an area, do you intend to, is this the type of development that should be in the center or on the main drag of where it should be? Or you anticipate something different? I, I think the answer would be something different in, in general planning.
If you're looking at a downtown village area where you want street oriented, street oriented commercial operations to capture that fat base with some residential above, what the general plan talks about as far as residential standalone units, it's to surround that village, not apply those residential units inside that village. So if that's what you're asking.
So in essence, what I heard there is yes, which is what I'm saying, is that from a city center, which we, we have planned to be the four-way and kind of that area should, should be the dense, what do you call it, the commercial on the bottom, residential on the top. And then you have, have, you know, single family homes and, and that, that density on the outsides. So I don't know that it's, I think it, it, I agree, it doesn't follow the general plan, but in a different way. You might be in the right spot, just the wrong thing in the, in that spot.
Yeah, you solve the problem if you leave some open space between these areas. That has to do with, that there are at least some.
I agree with that too, so when you drive down the, the road, so from the dam, if you're going to Huntsville, by Old Soul Basin, right? You have those high, high, in, high density developments right there, where those.
What side?
Yeah, there's two, there's two different.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, there's like one, and then there's a big nice field, then there's another.
And I don't agree with high density.
Those aren't high density. Not high density. In planning standards, this would be high density, but it is higher density for the valley, for the valley.
They're about twenty units to the acre, about the size you can get there.
How, how many is this, this is twenty acres?
Just here, it depends on how many units, eight, eight to ten. So, and that's, that's actually one of the things, if you go through the, the study that I put together for the open house we had about a year ago at the library, I provide four or five different scenarios of the level of density villages could be, depending on where and how successful we are at doing transfers. And what I found, if we were to be pretty equitable in our distribution of these units into all eight of these villages, you're at a pretty low density, you're probably looking at about eight units to the acre. When I say low density, I mean low relative to a village, not relative to a rural area.
Can you build a street regulating map? So if I, you guys, so this new map's out here, this is what I think we're living. So if I came in and I looked at street regulating map, and I came in, I put an application in, rezone, I have an application that fits a street regulating map. I just don't know that our issue today has so much to do with, but I know it may be confused. Seems like we almost just don't like how the map looks out, because what the applicants proposed is better than what that street regulating map is. So I'm, I'm trying to understand, we as a commission, are we just not liking the colors that have been put on the map by, that we, we as a commission, maybe not we collectively, but the commission voted on, we just not like that? Because he, what they submitted.
I don't like that, one didn't like it from, I don't like it from the beginning.
And that's fair. That's fair, I, I just want, at least for us, we're starting to workshop this, we have a bigger issue with the colors and not necessarily with what the applicant put out, because in my mind, the applicant put out something better than what's sitting right in front of us. So that's what I'm, I'm trying to understand, I'm confused, I actually, yeah.
Good question.
How variable is that?
When, what was the question?
How variable is the, is the road situation that sits down to move, change, delete?
Oh, you guys have the ability to ask the commissioners to readdress this map. And I don't know if they'll do it this year, and one of the reasons why is because if it's not, well, not just because of incorporation, if it's not applicant driven, we just, we're struggling with staff time. We, we've lost, we've had four people turnover in the department in the last six months. By the way, Bill Cobay is leaving Friday, his last day, so. He's the city manager of Fremonton.
Oh, wow.
So, yeah, starting, starting Monday. No, not further from home, but the money probably makes it feel closer.
Good for him, hopefully he still wears his bow tie every day.
But, so we're, we're struggling a little bit when it comes to resources, getting these kinds of things done, taking on new projects. However, it doesn't mean that we can't. I, I feel like if we didn't have, number one, incorporation looming, and number two, a, a couple of really high profile applications, if we hadn't had Eden Crossing last year, I think if the, would have been the county's best interest to put together a steering committee of this area and, and find out what that community would like to see, it's just, we're kind of stuck right now.
And my point really is, is that I sit in issues all the time, and so it's, it's hard, as we're trying to workshop this, trying to give him feedback of like, are you that, what can we give him, or are you really with the people that pointed us, right? And, and what, 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 what do you recommend an approval for?
So I'll tell you what I'm, what I'm thinking right now, I'll just lay out what I'm thinking. I, I sent in thirteen comments specific, some of them are very significant, some, some not so much. But I boil it down to three sets of issues. I don't know that the, the street regulating plan fits the reality of that area for a range of reasons, including those streets going through places that, you know, they shouldn't probably. I think the project, and I've lived in places where there are projects like this, I personally don't think that project belongs there. Maybe it belongs somewhere else nearby, not there. But wherever it belongs, there's a whole bunch of stuff related to it, or in the valley that I believe really has to happen.
Before you dive into this, sorry, and I was hoping from the beginning to just.
I know, but, but this, I look at this as kind of the, you know, upside down funnel. I go to the wide part, the skinny part's blocked. And for me, the skinny part's pretty blocked. And the third is maybe the biggest, and the county commission said, hey, wait on big things, wait on big things. This project doesn't have water and sewer, it's not going to happen imminently anyway. And certainly, I believe you'll know one way or another on incorporation, before you'll know anything about water and sewer. And so my outlook would be, yeah, if you wanted to find all the caveats and all the things why I think this project, what I would think this project would need if it was sitting in a better place, like by the storage unit, you know, all that vacant land down there, if a willing seller would do a joint venture, I think that's a much better place.
Down in, down in this area down here.
Yeah, I mean, there's more than fourteen acres down there that's buildable. You know, I don't know anything about it, but from where I come from, other resort communities, that's where something like this would end up. Not up here, where I'm saying things in here like, don't let the, you know, have the units, the front doors face the road, not the garages. You know, all sorts of caveats like that. But I'm saying, in my head right now, there's three things. The street regulating plan just doesn't seem logical to me. The project itself has a lot of issues that I would want to see changed for the betterment of the valley. And I think the county commission, they can't have it both ways. They can't say, wait, when you wanted to find these other nodes, but oh, here, let's just do this one, even though there are all sorts of issues. So I think wait these next bunch of months, and especially since there's no water and sewer, that's my outlook.
So, yeah, so, and we keep saying, and Trevor just said, obviously, the main thoroughfare going up to Powder Mountain on that road, right? At least that's what you're saying, it said that could be intended to be there. I almost, my vision changed when John brought that application, said, that's great, I'm going to put a main street down this road, which honestly, there's many places where you have a thoroughfare of traffic, and then you have a slower road of traffic. And that's really good planning, because you don't want your kids and everyone eating ice cream or something, you got these cars that are moving up and down, that's just good planning. So I, I would also say, for me, I think about, well, if there's really true commercial density in the purple, why is having housing, and I, I'm not necessarily saying I'm leaning one way or the other, I'm just truly, I'm asking questions. Why not put more housing that can go support that commercial? Because we just talked about another barbecue store, we were starting in the valley that's already shutting down. We can't keep our commercial open because we don't have a density, people in our valley using our.
They'll never survive. And they'll, that barbecue store will never survive.
They can't get a lift.
Probably, it's probably fair too, but.
That's not a good example.
They're driving to Ogden because they don't have all of their services available in the valley. And not to say that all services need to be available, but so long as you've got the motivation.
Totally true. I mean, I drive to, to Ogden for different variation, right? I mean, like you said, like, I could go to the barbecue joint there in Huntsville, or I could go to Goodwood in Riverdale.
Right.
So.
Hey, you want to talk about.
Right.
Good one, right?
I don't know that I couldn't get it, it's just I don't, like.
In, in that respect, so I, I don't mean there are no services in the valley, I mean, all of the services that, it's, uh, Ogden Valley right now is a bedroom community that is wholly dependent economically on the Ogden area. If it wasn't economically dependent on the Ogden area, people wouldn't need to drive to Ogden. They'd get their dry cleaning and their grocery shopping and their, their Goodwood and whatever in the valley. I would say that the valley needs that, I don't want that.
Eventually, it's, that's, that's inevitable, based on growth and necessity.
At, at some point in time, it may be.
Is it? Or could we plan for something that's not? But it's currently.
I could.
What's that? I, I think it's currently what we have today is a lot of second homes that go skiing. And we struggle to keep, you know, we're paying eighteen, pay eighteen, twenty dollars to have that mat moves for a freaking burger, right? It's just, and, and you know what, maybe that's just the cost of living in the valley, and maybe that's okay, I don't know. So I'm just, I'm just, I'm, for me, I look at it pretty black and white, and, and I, maybe I shouldn't, but to me, there's a streetly regulating map. And so for the applicant, if he puts it forward, we disagree with the street regulating map, and she said, hey, I don't like it.
I think that's, I, I, I mean, that's great, that's the way you look at it, because that's, in an administrative way, that's how we look at it, right? Black and white, it says this, it says this. And legislative, it's open up to all kinds of opinions.
You're totally right.
And out, and whether it should go fair. So if, that's where we have freedom to say, wait a minute, this doesn't fit our ledge, our plan for, because it would be better if it was over there. And so, yeah, maybe we didn't get it right in the plan, you know?
We did that, and this is the first time it came up, was in Nordic, because there was a street regulating plan to the north. And I think Charlie, you told us, yeah, this just, there's going to be some streets there somewhere. And then that came for a change in a few months, says, well, they, they don't want them there, they want them over here. And it was, well, we just, the plan was, there'll be some streets there somewhere, and you just drew in some streets, but it was never intended. That's exactly where they'll go.
That's, that's what happened here too, if you remember, because originally, if, I mean, if we want to go back that way, and it was, I just remember your, your verbiage was, I just took what was there and put it on the general, or on the thing, on the submission for it, because it would be the least controversial. And so there really wasn't any thought put to how it should be planned.
It's just, what is there now?
Yeah, so now this came in, and almost the same thing happened. It was, how do we fulfill John's with what could happen? And that's how we end up where we're at today. And I think it deserves a little bit more thought. And we didn't vote in favor of John's, the commissioners voted in favor of John's, and I, and so I'm kind of thinking through this. We didn't feel like John's was good planning, and so I, I, I'm just trying to get my head around your guys' brains, because my brain's not there. But I'm trying to understand collectively how we're thinking, just so we can get to some, some resolve for the applicant.
When I put together this thing I set up today, okay, an analysis. In the law, we're trying to read something so that it can all work. You take different things and you read that contractor letter, and you read it to make it valid, not invalid. Is there some way you can make a law work? You read it that way, because when people draft stuff, it's always got some goofy in it, okay? So, yes, okay, first thing I'd like to ask general plan, general plan, rural, small, okay? Next thing.
That's the vision, by the way, we're supposed to.
That's the vision, but if you recall, everything we do in the planning commission, we've got to have planning. And the first planning is always, it is consistent with the general plan, or it's not consistent with the general plan. So it matters, we can't just ignore the general plan. Okay, the second thing is the subdivision.
Hold on, I have a question for you. What part of this is inconsistent with the general plan?
Size.
The, the general plan doesn't define a village size.
It, it defines rural and village, which is not city, and small village, which is not large village. That's the vision.
That's your interpretation. The issue I have is, we can go ahead and deny this, and it's going to get to the commission, and they're going to do the same thing that happened with Eden Crossing. It's going to get approved, so we can go ahead, we can deny it, not put anything forward, or we can put conditions on it that can be accepted.
But you think the conditions would be accepted?
This?
I do.
Yeah, I think undoubtedly it's going to be acceptable.
We said that our height would be maximed at forty feet, we all agreed unanimously, and then they immediately changed it when it went to development agreement, fifty feet.
That's their priority.
I, they can, I'm just saying, any condition we put forth, they're going to go, hmm, nothing. So, and then everybody, they're going to say, look.
Any or all, because I think you can get some stuff to stick.
Anything that, anything that's not, I mean, you can get something to stick, I'm sure, I guess, I can't say. But there, there, it, when you look at this, the commissioners are going to go, oh, you approved it, as long as I have this. Well, that's a little bit of a reach, let's not do that, we'll, we'll just approve it either way. And then, then when it's explained, they're going to be, well, he said it's a good idea, and that'll be it. So that, that's really how it's going to go.
I think it'd be pretty powerful to recommend denial, and, but then say, but if you're going to anyway, this is what we want you to focus on.
That, that makes more sense to me, because there's no way that you say, I like this, but if we build an eight foot wall around these houses, or I like this, if we build an eight foot wall around these houses, for example, then the commissioners are going to be like, well, do they want an eight foot wall around their houses? You know, I talked to that guy, and he's not so sure about that, so I'm going to, I'm going to scratch that. Well, it says that it needs to be septic, well, we know that septic is not very good, so I'm going to scratch that. But that's exactly what's going to happen, and it'll be put out, the planning commission approved it, and the commissioners approved what the plan approved it as well. They won't even mention any conditions, it won't be. They won't even mention any conditions, it won't be.
Here's my other thing, we got a ton of contention in the valley right now. People are at each other's throats. Why did this corporation thing come about? It came about, people are scared, and they, hey, wait a minute, this isn't general plan. All these things I go to, they're not following the general plan. And they don't even care about it, they're just in the pocket of developers, they're just doing whatever developers want. General plan doesn't matter as well. Okay. The other thing they're worried about is form base. Well, what's form base? Well, you can do anything you want, as long as it has a look of a mountain bottom on the outside or something. Well, that's scary, I don't want whatever next to me.
A form base is way more than just architectural standards.
I know.
That's just, that's just an element of it, that you don't even have to have form base to have architectural standards. I guarantee you, so many resort communities that are now trying to fix their problems of the past don't have form base, but they now have architectural standards.
That's right. And I'm not, I'm, in fact, Charlie and I had this discussion, you don't need form base to have good design.
Right.
To have attractive villages and.
Just to be clear, that is a form-based regulation, if it has.
So we got all these different elements, we got the general plan, we got the subdivision standards, and now we're into form base. And that's scary in the public. Okay? So how do we make all of this that we have and have to deal with work together? Well, number one, we don't build huge things without open space between them. We can say, these are villages, and they've got, they taper down to some open space, and then they taper back up to another, whatever. Another two. It can't, I mean, this two lots being impacted, that's horrible, it goes from high density to armor with an eight-foot wall between them. That's, that's a big impact. It doesn't meet architectural standards in this location, or subdivision standards in this location. Form base, how can form base work? Well, there's some discussion in this staff report that says, well, it's intended form base will be every word C V two is. Well, that's huge, that's everywhere. So everything can happen everywhere that has the certain look to it.
C V two is only in the, it's the only, the red blood right there. I think you're thinking eighty-three.
So why don't we try this, in the context of what?
So how can you make form base work? Because form base has got, it has some good things to it. It's got multi-use. At this little European village, you got the little store downstairs and the guy living over. Okay, that's great. Limit the use of form base, don't make it everywhere, just have it in these little places where it is specifically needed, and you're not scaring anybody.
Yeah, that's a good way to go.
Next thing is these development rights. And I think I used the word in, in our discussion, we're twisting in the wind to try and make this transfer development rights work. It's an artificial construct, and we gotta do everything we can to make it work. No, we don't. This is gonna happen, for example, John, he's got a whole bunch of, and he's got Osprey, and he's got X amount of development rights, and he's using X line or something up there. So he's got some left over. It moves him to one of his other properties, where it might be more appropriate to use those rights. That is him transferring in their business property. That's kind of law averaging kind of thing. Now, if you go out and you try and develop this market for it, and we've had a lot of discussions, what's a development right worth?
It's a lot of these, where someone will pay for it.
Worth for it, somebody will pay for it. And I think the applicant said, I heard you indicated, yeah, ten thousand's about max, where you go for these things. Okay, well, five thousand, ten thousand. And now we got these land trusts out there, and people thinking about donating land to the land trust. Well, I'm a property owner, I can, I can, if I build this out, I can get three, five hundred thousand dollars for a lot using this developer right. Or I can transfer it to the land trust and get a tax deduction of five to ten thousand dollars. Nothing happening.
We just saw that in one of the recent meetings.
And the land, land trust is doing pretty well, and there's, you know, there's donations to it, and there's subsidies, and there's state money.
I'm concerned that we are impeding the ability of land trusts.
I, I agree, that's.
Because we are putting, we're putting ammunition out there for the IRS to say, what do you mean? It took a three hundred thousand dollar donation, charitable contribution deduction on your tax return, it's only worth five thousand, it's only worth ten thousand.
And that's why this isn't a pure market.
No, why would anybody donate to the land trust? So, transfer these rights within a John situation, back and forth with his properties, we're cutting a deal.
Or a landfill where you're trying to protect that barn, which is.
You don't, you're, you're not creating a value there, it's, you just move them around to where it makes more sense. But to go out and try, let's have a bank, and let's, everybody, you know, you can get five, ten thousand dollars, let's get killed.
The worst thing that could happen is you confound the donations going to the land trust. Because those have been, I mean, that beautiful, when you come down into the valley, that, you know, that barn and that whole area right there is, has been donated to the land trust. And there are other pieces around the valley that are in play right now for that to happen. And it's something, not this per se, you know, only, but other things happen to confound that, that'd be horrible.
So, speaking of, there's something I need to bring up here, the.
Charlie?
There is no limit on low income or moderate income, right?
We did, we did, no more than fifty percent, sorry, fifty, no more than fifteen percent of the market rate.
And that's our, this or in the?
In the.
When did we do that? Because I remember we had had this discussion.
We did, we did, and that stimulated with one of the subsequent changes that simulated the need for a cap.
So fifteen percent of the overall density, so for every ten that I put in, I got to put one and a half.
Per project or per?
It's, uh, it's just a percentage, and so it'd be across the board.
Meaning what? So, so this project, if it had a hundred and fifty homes, what I heard last time is the majority would need the lower income homes.
So, sorry, let me take a step back, I see the question, a little bit earlier than I know. So fifteen percent would not require transferable development rights. But there is not a cap on how many could be moderate income. Could be a hundred percent.
So even, so if, if there was a hundred here, you wouldn't need to go out and buy, you're only gonna be able to buy an eighty-five, for example, is what you're telling us? Okay, so you would have to buy those eighty-five though.
But I think the applicant was only proposing eighty to a hundred workforce and low-income homes, isn't that correct? On that?
That's the thought, yeah.
You were one fifty to one eighty-five, I think.
Total.
Total.
Mostly, mostly, you know, concentrated in this area right there.
That's correct. And to that point, I mean, the general plan talks a lot about moderate income housing, um, as an important component of the vitality of the community. Utah State Law requires it. Residential development goal number one, to provide housing choices in neighborhoods that will allow residents with a variety of incomes at different ages and stages of life living in the valley. To pursue additional programs that better capture property tax obligations. The goal of the commission is to support affordable homeownership and rental housing opportunities in Ogden Valley, maintain quality existing single-family home stock. And develop cluster ordinance, which I think this completes, that will allow for mixed housing types in compact areas consistent with village area locations in conjunction with the Eden Crossing area. So I think it hits a lot of things that are in the general plan, and I think we're really focusing on how it doesn't hit things in the general plan, I think.
That's okay though, I think we can focus on both, but if it doesn't hit the general plan, or, or Trevor's point, in a legislative manner, if it doesn't hit for a range of other reasons, then it's your obligation as a member of this commission to move in that direction. And as I said before, I think, we'll get to one point, which I think is a sticking point, but I think this project would play so much better for the valley, um, you know, from a density standpoint, from a flow, a person standpoint, if it were somewhere other than that. You know, for example, and somebody brought this up at the, that meeting, you'd split it, you know, the road splits the two parcels, and you're gonna have some amenities on one side of the road and some amenities on the other. Now, when I thought about it, having kids who wanna use this or that running across that road, and this is gonna be a kid-centric place, is horrible. I would vote no just because of that. I've never heard of something like that, where you've got your pool or your basketball court on one side or the other, and that's one of the busier roads in the valley at certain times. And you're far enough away from the intersection where kids who aren't attended by their parents are gonna be running across that road. That's horrible. No way in my mind, having, you know, raised a kid in this valley, would I think that's a good thing. That's unsafe, doesn't make sense, it's against the general plan, I think, just because it's, it's, you know, doesn't promote good, healthy living. So that's why I'm saying, this project has no water, has no sewer, you heard the people say they're not, those folks aren't clearly out in favor of it. Finding a better location, you don't own the property, to me, from a planning standpoint, seems like a better way to go. And when we get into it, I, I do have a huge problem with the approval priority, who gets to live there? Given that it's subsidized by the government. I have a giant problem with that. And I won't mention, we'll, we'll get, if we get to that, I'll, I'll talk about that.
Yep, definitely.
But just, you know, again, on the bigger picture situation, from a legislative standpoint, I don't think it fits the general plan, health and safety, in my mind, splitting a development like that on two sides of the road, where you're gonna have so many kids, and kids have friends here, and kids have friends there, and they're running across that road outside of the intersection. Terrible idea.
How about underground tunnel? On both sides?
There's so much stuff in that road.
I mean, I, it doesn't seem reasonable, feasible, you know, tunnels can exist, but.
Hold that thought for a minute, because we'll get to.
I think, having lived in places where stuff like this exists, there are better places for it. And the, and it would fit better in the community overall, long-term. And you have to think to some degree about, you know, those folks are gonna be your neighbors to some degree, and if that place becomes less, not well-lot of, and you live there, and you're seen as living in a place that did this or that to the valley, that's bad.
Are you concerned about riffraff that live in the?
No, no, not riffraff, no, I'm not saying riffraff, I'm saying that.
I understand your, your purpose just.
So I'm saying if the, if the place right there, you know, on that gateway going up into Wolf Creek, becomes, is not supported by the community, and you, you know, whatever, what's the name of it gonna be?
We don't actually have any.
Well, you have a kind of a general layout of the name and stuff.
Well, I mean, all of our properties have Liberty.
Liberty, so, Liberty, I live in Liberty, Liberty, oh, God, oh, that sucks. You know, that, you don't want that, where the perception isn't reality, but the perception is driven by where it is, what it is, that we don't like it is. It's just that it, you know, too much density in that, you know, perception of creating too much sprawl in New Towne. Whereas if it were somewhere else, doing essentially the same thing, great, you know, much less of a problems. So, because it's not, it won't have the inherent visibility with respect to the rural aspect, you know, disrupting ruralness, and, you know, so much right up against the road. The density that exists in Wolf Creek, up in the bigger, taller buildings, is not right up against the road, so it's set up against the hills. And so aesthetically, and, and the same thing will happen at Nordic Valley, those taller buildings, no one will see them unless you go in and look for them. Just one passerby out on the main road going to Liberty will have no idea that there's a tall building back there. And the tall buildings at Wolf Creek don't really matter, even those ones in, and they're a little taller down on the lake, on the Huntsville side, you don't really pick up on the massing because of the way the, it flows down towards the lake. So, what I'm saying is, you know, for me, the biggest challenge, one of the biggest challenges is, this project doesn't fit there. The road splits it, and it just isn't a bad place for the valley, so. That's my biggest general problem, and when we get into the details that we do, the pre-approval or the, who gets to live there, becomes just as big a problem.
And so I wanna come back, you weren't done yet, and then, and then let's go back to, and then since, I know how hard it is online, so Commissioner Womble, after you're done, if you have any questions, then just go to Commissioner Womble after Commissioner.
Commissioner Barber's statement, I recall years ago, a different owner of Wolf Creek. And it was a gym committee meeting, and he was in there saying, you can't let any development happen until we get to my resort. And I said, wait a minute, this is where I want my family to live. No, my customers are driving by your property, and I don't want any development on there. It's a gateway to my resort, and they're gonna come out there and buy stuff from me. I don't want you messing with my view or my gateway. And this is kind of a gateway coming out of the four-way up into all that development that just ran up down there.
And I'm not saying no development should be there.
No.
I'm saying that this development, in this context, would be better for the valley somewhere else.
Doesn't, doesn't, it says in the general plan also that it should, the driveway, like the thoroughfares.
Yeah, a couple of gateways or something, yeah. Anyway, to, so to put my comments, summarize them into something, I think it, this whole thing can work together if we concentrate on the, the small, the rural aspect. That's what the community wanted in twenty sixteen, and I think they're not seeing that now, and they're scared of it. And they're blaming whoever, this isn't what we bargained for. Number two, the development standards, or the subdivision standards, they're there for a reason. And if we're messing with these two little houses, I mean, that's the most obvious impact right there. If it doesn't meet the subdivision standards, why are we, would we ever recommend that it happen right there? It can meet the subdivision standards somewhere else, but not right here.
Quick question to the applicant, would it be a deal killer if the left side of the road, around that island of, of two homes was excluded? Is that a deal killer for your development?
Well, I, I mean, there's certainly components of the development that aren't dependent on that. I mean, I, I think at the same time, I don't know that just leaving that kind of horse in the middle of, of anything. I, I think that area needs a sensitive hand to deal with the fact that you've got residential to the west and the two homes to the east. I, I'll be honest, I mean, I build an eight-foot wall, if people want me to build an eight-foot wall, I don't think an eight-foot wall, I mean, I want my residents to look at it, right? I'll put a bunch of, I mean, there's already planning to put a bunch of evergreens and bushes there, as it was, you know, I'm just showing off the screen, but.
I'm just asking, I'm just throwing it out there, because we seem to have some problem with the island issue.
Sure, sure, I mean, and I, I think I said in the, in the planning meeting, I mean, again, if, if, if it were just solely up to us, we, we wouldn't build the road that's there at all, right? And actually, we probably won't until the, you know, the property owners on, on either side are looking to develop and want to create that road that goes all the way through. Okay, well, and we know that we have to save that, it's meant to be a public easement, according to the street regulations then. I mean, I, I do, and I'll say, when we, when we first started talking with the landowner about this particular site, and, you know, I'm speaking as someone who grew up in an area more rural than Eden. You know, I grew up in some cornfields in the middle of Nebraska. But I, again, before I was a developer, I was a designer. I was a planner and architect in Boston, San Francisco, and a big portion of what I did was planning town squares and commercial thoroughfares and little towns throughout New England, right? I, I guess everyone hasn't, it's fair for everyone to have an opinion. We look at this side and think this is exactly what should happen here, and this is good planning in my mind. I think if you put yourself in a resident's shoes, being able to rent and live in a home that is a five-minute walk from, you know, a, amenities and green space and park and grocery store and restaurants, that, that to me is the. that, that to me is the actual living, right? So, thinking about that intersection and putting commercial closest to the place where the vehicles are, that has the easiest access to them, and some, you know, some density closer to that commercial, and then stepping down to single-family and green space, that, that is, you know, I mean, I actually kind of, the Hilltown discussion in the planning meeting, that resonated with me, because I too love going to the Hilltowns in Germany and Italy and France, and that's what you see there, right? You see those dense village squares, and they, you know, the, very quickly, in that five-to-ten-minute walk, is when the residential happens. And so I, but when you think about a resident, they want to be, like, those are neighborhood amenities, right? That grocery store, that's an important part of life, and, you know, they'd much rather, I think all of us would much rather live a couple minutes from a grocery store than a couple minutes from a sub-store. And, you know, I do, I feel very strongly that, like, we were drawn to it. Before we even understood the street regulating plan and form-based zones, we were just looking at it as a site, you know, just... And in the original sketch that we put together, our uses and placement was very similar to what we have here. It was different in that with, they're much more curvilinear, and we weren't connecting to the properties outside of the nearest property, we were, you know, which is how we might typically do it, right? I do think it's a smart thing, if you're making a village node and you want to create connections, we understand. And so we adjusted the overall kind of use to reflect the street regulating plan. But our initial take on it, the uses was, and the location of those uses, the single-family, the two-to-three-story, the commercial, they were in the same spots. They were just, had a much more curvilinear and really narrower road profile in terms of how those neighborhoods were, and in my mind, maybe a little more villagey. But, that's neither here nor there. I think we're perfectly happy to connect through with the street regulating plan. But, I mean, that's, I guess that's my two cents on it.
Yeah, just, I think this form-based zone was, this staff report, you referred to it, it was intended for small area zones and not expansive areas. So, I think this, the whole thing we have to work with. General plan, the subdivision standards, the form base can work if we come to the conclusion that, yeah, form-based can work in special situations that are very small and targeted and serve a specific need in that location. It shouldn't be spread out. So, this can be read, the things we have on the table can be read so they can be consistent and they can work, and hopefully dampen the fires that are now burning in the hearts of the public out there. They're afraid, they're imposed upon, they're mad, and that's not good for a community.
I would agree, the people are mad. And I think, I don't think it's just one community either. It's not like it's the whole valley.
Right, that's interesting, that's what I've heard, I mean, you're in Huntsville.
It's just the unknown. No, people are not pleased with the direction. You know, there probably are some, a few that are. No one I personally know or associate with really outranks the basis of happy and glad about Eden Crossing, for example. They don't think Eden Crossing, in general, I'm speaking in general terms, is a great thing for the valley, the way they, the way they understand it today, and the way it came about. People weren't happy about it, so...
Even the folks that I talked to don't even know, starting from first busy, like... Yeah, but even when I talk to them, they're, when they don't know, they're, they don't want it because they don't like it, they're mad about it.
Yeah, so if they don't understand it, form-based is really hard to understand. And if all of a sudden it's gonna be applying everywhere, they don't want any doing it. If it can do work in this little two-block area to allow a little something to be there, okay. It didn't light the fire, so we dampen the flames and give them something that looks like the general plan idea. Open areas, you know, dense areas, but they will be little. That could go a long ways to bringing some community peace back to the valley.
Some time.
Yeah, time is gonna be important. Commissioner, when you say open areas, maybe open between the form-based that's Eden Crossing and the existing commercial area, what do you think personally, open?
I just look at the, just something, okay? I look at this, okay, we have, we know it's dense over in Eden Crossing, Doris and Maverick and the commercial area.
Right, we know it's dense in Wolf Creek, Trapper's, and Eden is retail more than it's dense.
Yeah, I mean, the commercial there is a few restaurants, a little log cabin's around, people frequent that, they go to the, there's a bar, live music, okay, they go to that. And then, there's the road going up to, I don't remember. Okay, and you go up there, and there's, there's two houses along there, but they're big lots, there's open space, and you don't feel crunched like you do driving through Snowgrass to the Maverick. Then you get over to Eden Crossing, and I think that's gonna be more the Maverick to Snowgrass drive. There's gonna be a lot of commercial, density there. Then, as you travel over to Old Town Eden, there's gonna be some opening there, they're not crunched together. And then you go through Old Town Eden, around the park, that's pretty dense, but it's gonna last for a while. Pretty soon, you're out in the opening there.
So, help me understand, from your personal perspective on open, is what's on the screen right now, is that, this development right here, is that open?
I don't know which one that is.
That's right.
Listen to me, road, that's a house.
That's right, right across from, sort of one-acre lots. That pro-er property that David, which resides there.
Eden Acres? Eden Heights?
Eden Acres.
That's a development that's between Old Town and Newtown Eden.
That's right.
That's the one-acre on the north side of the road. Yeah, one-acre zone.
Is that open?
In there? Well, they're one-acre lots, okay. It's not four dwelling units on a 3,000-square foot footprint.
So, you're comfortable defining this as open?
No, no, it's not open, but you look to the right of this, open.
Yeah. That's kind of where I want to hone in on. It's one thing from a, the general public has the same perspective as well. When you look at that, that seems pretty dang dense, right? That's a suburb, that's a suburban community right there. Even though it's one-acre development, and still, and by definition, rural, rural development, one acre, I think most people in the valley would say, no, that's, that's not open. But if you zoom...
Open is, and then it might work.
Right, right, and that's why I'm asking you what yours is. But when you zoom out a little bit, you say, okay, now, in the context of everywhere else, there's some openness.
There's open around it, and then at large.
So, the question that I have for you specifically about form-based here, or Eden Crossing here, and Eden Village there, let me turn the zoning on. This portion right here, what do you think is open? Do you think this fits inside here?
Is that purple Eden Crossing?
That purple is Eden Crossing.
Okay.
Or is it more like, this needs to stay as it is now?
Well, on the left side of that, this needs to stay as it is. The left side of that is the road going up to Patterman.
Right here.
Okay, and on the bottom-left side of it is where the grocery store will be built. Right around the intersection, right around the four-way area, right there. The focus of commercial, okay? And as you go away from that, it should become less dense.
And I'm trying to figure out what that means to you. What is less dense?
Green, open field is open.
So, the way that it is right now?
What are the lots in Kobe above that, of the acre lots, aren't they?
Those are two, those are two-acre plus, surrounded by open space.
Okay, so you're getting even more expansive as you go away from the Eden Crossing?
Yeah, that's supposed to be the edge of the Wolf Creek area.
Both of, both of these lots, both of these little lots right here are an acre. The majority of the de-staple subdivision is one acre. The three-acre zone has the exact same lot development standards as the one-acre zone, except you have got deeper backyards, 150 feet apart, so your homes are 150, one home every 150 feet, you maximize your density. So, the three-acre zone from the street looks exactly the same as the one-acre zone. You have to get the helicopter to see the backyard bigger.
You're comparing one acre to three acre? Not necessarily. The square three-acre lot is about 350 feet square.
I don't disagree, just if I'm a developer and I'm trying to maximize my profit, I'm gonna give one house every 150 feet, because that is the minimum.
I'm trying to get in the head of the population of the town plan.
Well, I agree, I totally understand what you're saying.
That's creating bad stuff.
Yeah, no, I totally agree what you're saying. What I think the challenge we have here is that a lot of the folks in the population don't see that one-acre development that you see right here, and three-acre development, pretty much the same thing, just extra big backyards that nobody else gets to use.
I mean, this is a perfect example, so if those were three-acre, like you're describing, they would have a lot bigger backyard, so if you drive on either road, you would see bigger spaces between density.
On these roads here, or on the...
Yeah, on the main thoroughfare, right?
Fair, yep, as you're driving down here, you would see...
You might be right about the 150, but either way, it should double the length, so the houses are spread twice as far, so you have open space in between the two.
Okay, I think that's fair, I have a hard time, even with three-acre lots.
Right, if you're driving through there, where you planned it, it's there, but the surrounding area, the thoroughfare that you drive, it feels more open.
If we tell people they can't put a fence around their lot, and I'm not saying we should, I'm saying if we tell people they can't, open space is gonna be pretty visible.
Even with a fence.
Once you start fencing in those lots.
My neighbor has a fence all around, it's six acres, it's pretty open.
So, I live in a real-world example of what you're saying, Charlie. When I bought my land twenty-some years ago, between today and now, I think I counted within like a mile and a half radius.
You okay by zooming in on that development?
Something like, and not on my private street per se, but if you make a circle around that private street, there have probably been, I think, forty-some, three-acre homes built on three-acre parcels since I bought mine, right? Probably, that makes a brother sound. I still feel like I live in a very rural area. So, when I drive from the fire station down 500 to my house, there's lots of three-acre homes now, along that road, and more coming all the time. I see wells, I see, they put a well in last week. But there's still enough space around those three-acre homes, and most of the homes are set back, not up by the road. It feels rural.
Okay.
It would feel way less rural, of course, if there was all of a sudden a cluster home right in the middle of all that. That would not feel, but the way that's all spread out, forty-some homes on whatever number of acres, and some of them are bigger than three acres, for sure.
Yeah.
So, we should probably, Commissioner Womper has been waiting quite some time.
She has been.
Is it rough to you?
I don't know, I guess I just wanted to say that.
And that's really where I want to wrap my head around, is three-acre, is that open enough that when we look at this space between these two, this space right here, that three-acre zoning will get us where we want to be?
I think three acres can feel open if it's three-acre, 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 and it's greenish and not, you know, or...
Let me ask you a quick question. How many protests can you get, how many people are upset about what Commissioner Barber's talking about on that road? People developing on these three acres?
I'm not sure.
None.
Zero.
Yeah.
Because it feels open, but you go over there, quarters, all the hearts are in the town plan right now. Yeah, that answers the question.
Okay, and specifically from your personal point of view, one unit for three acres is fine right in here? Is that what I'm hearing?
But that takes all the open space eventually with the empty space growth.
What I heard is you're okay with the one acres personally, when there's three spaces on each side.
I'm okay with an open field, the open field around the corridor going up to Patterman, not joining these two, the purple and the magenta, the parkers together.
And one unit for three is open?
Well, and seeing on the sides of that road going up to Patterman, that could be lot average. It could be moved away from the highway, it could be houses on, concentrated in a small part there would really give you a feeling of openness.
Yeah, and I think that's where, I want to make sure it's clear that we are definitely talking about perceptions, personal, personally-held perceptions, and I don't think anyone's wrong. Because what I heard Commissioner Barber just say is, if you put a little cluster of houses there, regardless of how much open space, you're gonna look dense right there. But what I just heard you say is, a little bit of cluster is okay if you surround it with open space.
Quite a little bit, you know, two, three homes?
Sure, that's a great question.
Now, we've got a potential problem. I think I go back, the general plan says rural, small villages, open, with character. You and I, I think you're the most senior on being open planning, and then you, right? Something like that.
I came in right when we finished this, and I remember it being, what we were sold, I would say, is dense, then tapered out, right? This goes dense, 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 right? There's no taper at all, especially where it's already CV, right? So, we're jumping from this to one acre and we're moving to Wolf Creek, and it's like, it's like cliff dive.
The Old Town taper was so much better when we could do that, right?
Yeah.
This one was hard because you had the CB2 zone, which, how do you compel someone who's already zoned CB2 to go to a form-based?
And I think that's part of the problem, too, to be totally honest, is that the perception in the valley, even from, like, I was talking to a developer the other day, and he's like, wait, what? Like, didn't understand how this works, because he's always like, well, it goes in the places they've already been designated for years, there, right? And then all of a sudden, like you say, it's changing that perception, because everybody says, oh, well, we look at this, well, we could say the form base is that whole thing, so anywhere in there can be retail and dense, and they're like, wait a minute, it's not the plan I've known for years, and, you know, I'm a stakeholder in the valley, been here for twenty-plus years, you know, thirty years.
Anywhere inside of the form-based zone could be retail, is that what?
Yeah, I mean, because, I'm not just retail, but could be big, could be huge, could have unlimited amounts of density, right? Really, I mean, we've talked about that, as much as you can fit in there, that's what is allowed. And I think that's part of the problem with this, is we know it's gonna be dense and crowded, but then it's gonna be really dense and crowded, and then it's gonna immediately cliff dive to the one acre, and then open space, and you're like, that wasn't the intention, the intention was to kind of ripple.
I would love to see a ripple here, if we could.
Charlie, is there a height restriction?
Yeah, yeah, forty feet. Unless somebody tells, unless commissioners tell you otherwise.
I understand Commissioner Womper.
I think she's been patient long enough, yes.
It's not in my nature.
There we go.
We need to turn you up a little bit, hang on. You've done a great job of being, you could, feel free to just start talking, we'll listen to you.
Okay. There's a bit to talk about.
A bit to talk about.
Number one, just on the latest discussion.
Cut now.
You were trying to get people, are you right here?
Oh, there you are.
Okay, you were trying to get people to nail down what they think open space is, but you have personally defined open space to us as ten acres.
Ten acres.
So, and that came up in a meeting, in fact, the joint meeting between the county commissioners and our planning commission, when they were upset that we were denying, I believe it was Eden Acres.
Yeah.
And we discussed that we didn't want a large area that was a blurred mass between New Eden and Old Eden, and now having this... new Eden and old Eden and now having this completely spread out sprawl.
Sprawl.
Yeah.
So, so that's one thing, is that defining open space had been defined as 10 acres. Some of the other points I wanted to make was, while I agree with Commissioner Burton that we need to, gone to the Rs and form based zone. Uh, and defining ordinances to become more specific, for example, we don't have a definition of small village. We have to dance, it's the girl that brought us. So we have ordinances on the table. We have an applicant that has come forward and we have to address that legally with the current situation. So where does that leave us? That leaves us with either approving, denying, tabling, motion. And as we've learned in the past, the only way to stop the commission from moving forward was to table. If we deny or approve, we get to do whatever they'd like. When this motion to table came for us last week, something interesting happened. Director asked the commission to specifically give a hard date as to when we would be tabling and bringing it back. In my two years on the commission, that's never happened. Am I still talking?
You are, we're, we're hearing you.
Okay, so that's never happened in the two years I've been on the, the planning commission. I think it's interesting since when we have mentioned that we wanted to work on some big projects about, uh, uh, redefining certain ordinances, closing loopholes and things like that, we were told that we had to wait until after the vote in November. So that puts us in a sticky situation. We have an applicant on the table, we have ordinances that have already been approved. To my understanding, we are legally bound to apply those ordinances to the current applicant. Uh, with Eden Crossing, we specifically mentioned that it was a great plan and the valley needed that plan, but not in that location. And we were slightly overruled. So unless the applicant is willing to withdraw his application, we're looking at this plan in this location. And, you know, we can deny it or we can approve it. I'm in the camp that we would deny, but at the same time put forth, put forth, um, uh, strongly worded, I don't even know, request, I guess. And so that would take us back to the list that Charlie started the meeting with.
Well, thank you for that full circle. I, I think I'm ready to get to the last list if you, if you, uh, if you're comfortable with it now.
I'm here.
Perfect, and sorry, not that you are delaying us. Are you guys okay if we get to the list? This is going to, this is going to really help us shape a recommendation.
One way or the other.
One way or the other. Um, and I think it'll hit a lot of the, the questions that have already been discussed, less from a hypothetical or theoretical perspective and more from a pointed, um, question answer. Okay, so, um, uh, sorry, I didn't finish, uh, here's Joe, let's see. Okay, uh, so the next thing that Joe has is a developer needs to share the cost of the roundabout, roundabout the intersection of Highway 158 and Highway 166, 62. Roundabout will give the area village type atmosphere versus stoplight, gives the city, uh, gives, a stoplight gives the city type of atmosphere.
I have a question about that. My recollection with Eden Crossing, one of the things that John did to sweeten the deal was that, to my memory, he offered to pay for the entire roundabout.
He offered to pay for the entire roundabout on the condition that every rezone that the county considers in this area has a stipulation that the developer helped pay back the roundabout. So that's, right, right to the point, that's already going to be a development area.
That would already be in there?
We have a, we have a contractual obligation with Eden Crossing to make sure that that, that's in there. We also have allowed.
Well, if it's already in there, you can strike it.
Well, we'll make sure it's in there with an emphasis on it.
How broad is that though? Like, is it just anyone in form based or like, what does that mean? Which, like, is it, does that make sense?
I believe, I believe I wrote it in a way where it said any form based rezone in this village area helps pay for that, but, um, there are also impact fees that will help pay that cost back. And so in that agreement, we agreed to tap 100% of Eden Crossing's impact fees to help pay that back.
It's a pioneering agreement.
Basically, and then 50% of other transportation impact fees to help pay that back as well. So, um, the gift to the county gifted quotes was front-ended, front-ended loan, basically. The gift back to the developer was to pay it back.
So for the applicant who's sitting in the room, one more advantage to moving this project to a different location would be you don't have to pay in.
Pay in.
Okay. Um, next one, uh, zoning diagram by the developer shows a road narrowing, narrowing by one of the two residential properties, uh, the island area with a dashed line. Uh, I think that's the, I'm talking about the north side there.
Well, it just implied the way I saw it as part of the road would be on people's property.
And I think that, so the commissioners are taking cursory reviews of this, they're not, they're trying not to make up their mind. I mean, take that for what, what you will, they're trying not to make up their mind until they get a recommendation one way or the other from you guys. But I'm, we're, we're talking about the road that ran along the north property line here, right?
Well, are you, thank you, got something.
I got a second, sorry.
I believe it was a property, it was on the north property line and a portion of that road was shown on the, uh, on the private property and not on a part of the, uh, parcel that's, uh, under consideration for rezoning.
Yeah, let's go back to here. I, I mean, one thing that's important to know is like, all of these roads are shown, I mean, we, all of them are shown on private property, right? You know, I mean, it wasn't, in fact, we kind of took, that road was entirely on that person's property and I, I think we, we put it on the, I mean, we don't, we don't, again, like, if, if, if we wanted to put it back where it currently sits and have it on that property and so it'll never get built unless that property owner builds it, again, that's fine, like that, I mean, I think we're.
Well, I guess my only point is when I saw it there, I didn't want to prove a lot that, to say that we're condemning private property and put it in a road.
Yeah, we, we don't have any rights to build anything on anybody else's property, that's, I think I already said that.
I think I already told you, Chris, I'm pretty sure I already told you, Commissioner Harvey said, that was one of the first things he owned in, not just like you, he said, no, 100% of that road needs to be on this applicant's property.
Okay.
We'll make sure that gets in there. That really leaves a narrow area in that area to put, put things in, but, um, so that's definitely going to be in there though.
So side, side question. If the road, half the road is shown on this lot, this developed house lot, and the guy wants to build a garage over there, is the county going to say, no, you can't build a garage there because that'll be a future road?
If, the road's not on his property, right?
Well.
It's showing going on his property at some point.
Sorry, no, so the road would be completely off of his property.
It has to be, otherwise it's a taking because he can't build his garage.
Well, in this case, because unless he was asking about the form base, then it will be, yeah.
So all streets, this is the note I have right here, all streets shown on street regulating plan to be placed on the applicant's property and not pushed on the other.
And we're back to the original thing we had with Nordic. The street regulating plan is a bunch of streets drawn there, but they're not necessarily intended to be there, just there probably might be some streets there.
Yeah, yeah, and in this case, um, the, the code specifically says plus or minus a couple hundred feet.
Charlie, let me ask you this, so the, the plan, like the, the, if you go back to your other screen, it has a layout, you know, traditionally, so within the last, what are the, three or four years, three years, the, the layout, not this screen, but the other one, actual zoning, the layout has always been that red. That's what everyone's understood. So everyone knew that if you wanted to buy retail, you would be buying in this red, right? Or if you wanted to have density, it would be in here because that's how it's been for quite years, right? Only the last three years has anything ever changed from that. And what I find interesting about both Eden Crossing and this is all of a sudden it's, oh wait a minute, now it's everywhere because we're form based. It couldn't be here, it can be in Liberty, it can be in, in Huntsville, it can be, and it can be kind of the sprawl of what it was planned to be for a long time. And I think that this plan here, right, you look at the, the purple, is that the manufacturing?
Yeah.
And nobody complains about that because it's all tucked away.
It was very highly contested when it was applied for.
But apparently, do you drive around there and go, oh, that, that dance studio that's down at the bottom of that is terrible.
Same, same thing with Walmart, everybody complains about Walmart until it's in and then they go shop there.
But was it a complaint about this or about the gravel pit?
Both. Gravel pit was very, very loud. Gravel pit was a bad idea.
Hang on a second, I have a clarification to make. I keep hearing people talk about how form based can become anything. And then you can put as much as you want and fit in there as possible, but there is a distinction within form based. Because when we approved that house with the flag lot, it was confirmed that due to the street regulating map, the street regulating map was everything. And so with, he was in a residential form base and he could, he could buy and sell TDRs, but he couldn't build anything or do anything outside of his existing ordinance.
That's correct, and so you guys tell me if I'm wrong, but I think when people in this room are saying you could do anything, I think we're talking about the perception that the public is presenting to us.
All you have to do is change the, the color of the map, right? Which it used to be like, oh, we got to get to a CV1 and, you know, like people more understood that, well, now it's, well, now all I got to do is change the map, you know, and then apply for the zone, which, so I, I, you know, it, I know in a lot of ways it made it harder, right? Because you have to do it twice.
Yeah.
But in a lot of ways, people understand it and like I say, it's only been three years. In the, in the terms of how long this has been taken to develop as it is, that's nothing.
Right.
You know, so people don't know, people don't expect, the planning isn't what it is, and all we're doing is really picking open fields where people are willing to sell or, or not understanding what the values of their, it could be based on what this form base is because gosh, they probably haven't been paying attention for three years. And someone says, oh, there's not a thing, come in, we buy it cheap and we build, build quick. Now, I don't, I don't know if that's exactly what's happening here, I'm just saying generally that's, the problem I see is we got, we take the farmer's build to develop, but we're not taking the open spaces in the retail area that's been set aside forever, we're not developing any of that. I mean, that's what has been planned for forever, we're saying, let's take the field, let's develop that.
And, and there's a, there's a reason why that's occurring.
Well, these are fields too. So you can say it's easier, but those are fields.
Well, at the moment.
No, those are fields right now.
That's what I'm saying.
So, so we're saying, oh, let's do that one, not that one, even though that one's a field. Well, because you can, somehow you have a willing and able seller. No, because the person who owns that knows that it's worth more because it's already zoned.
Yeah.
That's, versus saying, well, there's this cloud of form based and if I can get it shut through, I, you know what I mean? Again, I, I, there's a lot of work, I mean, but there's this cloud and it's only three years old, so if I, if I go in and say, I'm going to buy your farmer's build at your price and then I'm going to convert it to form based and it's part of the plan.
Yeah.
They don't even know if their house is part of that plan.
Yeah.
I need an explanation. There's a street regulating plan. Can you have a street regulating plan without form based?
Yes, but not the other way around. I mean, I guess you could do whatever you want to do if you doubt it.
Can you have form based without a street regulating plan?
No, form based needs to.
So we got this big street regulating plan.
And you can call street regulating plan whatever you want to, but yeah, form based relies on a street regulating plan.
Okay, so we got this big street regulating plan and if you're within that area, you can apply for a zone change to form based. But if you're not applying for a zone change, are you in any way restricted by the street regulating plan?
No, not if you're in form based, or not if you're not in form based. Form based code and the street regulating plan does not apply to your property until form based is, is, until your property is rezoned.
There's another reason, if we looked at form based as being a very special, small thing, it works. If it's this huge thing, we're just creating a nightmare because these guys don't have to comply with it, but these guys do have to comply with it. And so we got a hive collage going on.
That, that makes it a challenge for sure. The other, the other thing I want to make sure was clear with Trevor's comment was.
That's Commissioner Schuman's thing.
With Commissioner Schuman's comments, I apologize, with former Chair Schuman's comments, is there's a reason why this area hasn't developed out yet and that is the lack of sewer. Now, despite what everyone's hearing about sewer and Eden Crossing right now, let's put that aside for a second. The land price was just right and the economy of scale was just right, that, that particular developer felt like he could afford sewer. You have to get a lot of different minds to get on the same page with their wallets, make sure sewer actually works over in this area. And that's one of the reasons why it just hasn't been extended. And that's one of the reasons why, um, from a planning perspective, I supported this, is actually the only reason frankly, I supported this was because it was going to bring sewer to provide for this. This is not in an ideal location, admittedly. Okay, we're ready to move on?
I think we mentioned time, right? So my comment kind of relates to time generally with form based. You look at this, everybody knows this is where retail goes, it's what they've planned, they've known. And I bet you if you surveyed most of those homeowners and up until Eden Crossing, they had no idea that this was possible.
That the commercial was possible.
That this form based change, this, this, you know, I'll call it unlimited density in most, in most of that area is, was possible. So these homeowners, you know, I talked to the one big home, one of the big landlords there and he basically couldn't believe that. And I'm like, well, you've been involved in this. He, up until Eden Crossing, he didn't know. He's a developer, I mean, kind of.
Yeah. I wonder if, uh, was that a recent conversation?
It's around Eden Crossing.
Okay, I just had a few people calling.
But like, my point is, people don't really know where this is and I, I think that's part of the comments of just scaring people, you know, and it's, it's hard because it's like, oh, all of a sudden there's these new rules that everybody plays by.
Yeah.
It's making things we don't like, so time helps heal too, is what we've already done.
I agree.
Growth.
I agree.
More to think about, it's street regulated plan that can be form based or not affect every, it's unworkable, it creates a nightmare.
Unless there's motivation for others to rezonate form based, I agree.
Yeah, and if you're rezoning the form base, then you have a huge pile of density.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so, uh, next one, uh, that Joe's offered us is, uh, no building permits to be issued until, uh, plans for culinary and sewer are, are provided. And, um, that's, uh, part of our existing development code, so.
I didn't know.
It's, it's a great observation.
But in the original document that was on the agenda last time, it just talked about sewer as mandatory, did not talk about culinary as mandatory. And so I put that on note.
I got you.
Two of mine, that culinary and secondary ought to be in parallel with your same wording that you had on sewer.
Okay.
Because that's part of the general plan to allow this density because it causes that infrastructure to branch out.
So the reason why, um, the staff recommendation was so specific about such systems not being used is because they're allowed right now. Whereas culinary, so you could either, when you're doing your, your, your development, you can prove that you've got either a subject system or an approved sewer system. When you're doing your development, you have to prove that you have culinary water, only, only one way.
But what I'm saying is dropping a new well there would not be consistent with the general plan. And in my mind, that would be a reason to not approve it because you're, you're not consistent. The general plan talks about using the shared infrastructure that you leverage through these. The general plan talks about using the shared infrastructure that you leverage through these type of activities. So I would want to see, that's a reason to not approve. So if you want to, you know, word around that, fine. Otherwise, I would say no, that is not consistent with the general plan.
Okay, and I, I like what you have here. Both culinary and secondary water must be provided by an existing water entity. I've got a couple of questions for that, though, and that's based on your comment number two. Is that as long as an existing entity can provide? What happens?
No, if they can't, they can't, you know, because the general plan doesn't say it. It says you shouldn't be dropping wells and subject tanks all over the place. They said we should have centralized services.
But there is another route there, is you can, if you, they can't provide today. Again, for reason of today, they're not required to tell you how.
Is it good planning?
I'm talking about, I don't, in my mind, what I'm saying is, I don't care about the fact that you have to, that you have, you know, that it could come down the road. I'm saying, when, if you approve this and you create a development plan, a development plan or agreement needs to say, in my opinion, that the water comes from a water company. And that is not on-site.
So my point, my question to, to you is to say, they don't have to have the water, you can go get it and give it to them. That's my only point.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying. I agree with you, it should come from a company, and it should not be a well.
Right.
I, I'm in agreement. So I'm just saying, there's another way to get it, that's all I'm saying.
Well, that's, the, the way the general plan talks about these villages getting their services is from centralized points.
Yeah, and I, and I agree. Just to clarify, no new wells, not necessarily no wells. I think you're saying on-site, no new wells, is that right?
Yeah, no new, like, I mean, if a water company, you'll buy a well across town. Well, if a water company has to drill in a well because of capacity issues, that's their business. If they have the water rights to do that. But I'm saying, each development should not be creating their own water.
We also can't mandate wells, that's a state limit, they, they, I could go get a water rig and I could put it on my property, Charlie could do it, I think, without it.
Seems to me this may be rude, because if you're gonna serve a certain number of people, you have to be state-regulated, and you have to be a water company.
Oh, we're third in connections.
Yeah.
There's some small number of connections.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, the general plan talks about centralized services, and, and using these, this increased density to leverage that power. And so creating your own, sounds like that.
Let me, let me, maybe I could add to that. I think we need to do better at planning and helping do more for our current problem that we have with water and sewer, where we have a thousand different, and I know the county commission has mentioned several times that it's a problem, because there's a ton of different water companies and nobody.
Seventy or something.
Yeah, and so I think, but.
Says exactly what I'm saying. You don't need seventy-one. For seventy, you don't need seventy-one.
So let's be, let's be clear. Right now, the county has a code. It's part of the subdivision code that says that if you are within, I think it's fifty feet times the number of lots or number of units you're putting in, from an existing culinary water service provider, you have to go with that service provider as long as they can and will serve you. If the culinary water provider is choosing to use their own ability to deny service to you, not because they can't serve you, because they don't want to, because they don't like what your land use is, that is essentially, if it's the county commissioners who are in charge of approving that land use, then that, that water company has the ability then to usurp the county commissioner's approval of, of the project. So the code says that if that water company that is within that distance will not serve them or cannot serve them, then they can create their own water company. I like what you're saying is, no new water company, no new well, unless you're helping an existing water company boost its system. Only concern that I have, and I'm not naming any names, but there are at least two water companies in the valley right now that are denying service, not because they can't, but because they won't. The, we've got a well going in right now, which we know there's gonna be a lot of protests filed to serve a development, not because the water company can't provide, but because the water company won't provide. That well could be part of that water company's system, and boost their water system. But the board on that company is choosing to not provide that service, because they don't like the development.
It's interesting that you bring all this up, because it also, it builds to the point that Commissioner Burton mentioned about how people are not happy.
Yeah.
I mean, the boards aren't doing that. I mean, if they're doing, they're doing it not because, obviously not because they can't do it. And because, if not because it probably would help there, or everybody else, right? They're doing it because they know everybody else doesn't want it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, another point to, we're, we're kind of making everybody mad at what we are planning, so.
But I don't disagree.
I don't know why we aren't listening to anybody.
We've got a, we've got a brand-new well that was just sunk over by the Liberty Park, because Nordic Mountain Water, I'm gonna name names on that one, because that's more of a historic, that's in the further past, doesn't want to serve Nordic Development. Nordic Mountain Water has deteriorating infrastructure and a, a, a poor amount of flow and storage. And this new developer can put millions of dollars into that system to make their system better. That's good planning. But having a great-looking nose on your face is also, you know, it's a good thing, but if we cut off our nose to slide our face, we're not gonna get good planning. And I have heard a lot of people say that, for example, sewer, they don't want sewer going in. They would rather see subject systems proliferate, because if you put a sewer system in, you get this kind of stuff. And that's, that's just not good planning. We need to find a way to plan better.
So one of the arguments for fifty years. So one of the things I said at the beginning of this year is, I think that, maybe not this commission, but ultimately, the county commission needs to provide leadership in this water and sewer. They, they're unwilling to do it. It's hard work. It's dirty, it's gritty, it's messy. Doesn't help them politically, individually, but goddamn it, they should be doing it. If they want development in this valley, those three people, or, and their, you know, whatever resources they have, should be providing leadership for these water companies and the federal money and all of this stuff, to have guidance, have a master plan, to take all these studies that have been done, synthesize it, and make it happen. Otherwise, it's just a bunch of BS.
Before things started getting really hot in the valley, we did have a little water summit with different, the larger water providers. And the, the sense that we got from the leadership on those water boards is, no, county, you're not gonna make decisions for us, you're not gonna.
And I'm not saying decisions per se, there are ways to work around that.
Right. Like, what I'm saying is, trying to figure out ways to open up collaboration and cooperation between the different companies. And the water companies kind of closed ranks on that, and, and, I mean.
That was how many years ago?
It's a defensive commodity. It was about five, I think.
That's five years ago.
A ton of time ago, but, I don't know.
And, you know, there are ways around that. And I'm not an expert on water in Utah, other than water. And Utah is a big deal.
Yeah.
Certainly. And this isn't the only place that has had these problems. And it takes money. Federal money has come in. Why was that federal money handed out? If these things haven't been sorted out, why wasn't there more leverage employed with that money?
So, Charlie, you mentioned that, like, your, your code allows that, so, I mean, I know that I can't really argue with code, but, so if I'm, if I'm, if I'm gonna build something, right? And I'm, I'm gonna build something that's not hap, that's not, the neighbors aren't happy about, and the water company's not happy about, well, there's seventy water companies to pick from. It seems kind of a silly thing for the county to step in and say, well, you couldn't convince seventy people, or however many, seventy water companies that this was a good thing, but we'll let you do it. You know what I mean?
Let you build a new one.
Yeah, we'll let you add another, because you couldn't convince those, those seventy groups.
Well, I think to Jason's point, county commissioners don't have control over that. They don't get to approve a water system or not. That's a hundred percent in the state's control. But what the county can do is, the county can say.
Well, that's what I mean, is like, but can't we say, we won't approve it unless you have one of these existing water companies? You mean, otherwise, we won't approve the rezone. We can do that.
And, well, okay, on the rezone, yeah.
That's what I mean, like, then, like, we could say, well, if the rezone's contingent on you getting one of these water companies to sign on.
To agree.
You know what I mean, Charlie?
That's what I wrote, isn't it?
Why couldn't you have done this legislatively?
And they would totally play.
And you already have intention on having to get water in.
That's exactly what they want you to do.
Like, what's your kind of state law?
Because of subs.
Every, what's your kind of state law?
And that's why they're being, they're transitive. And I don't, I don't think you should say, existing water company, because existing won't. Now, then.
Ten years from now, when they start building?
Well, but why would you do it? If they can provide water somehow, convince the state that they can have their own thing, let them do it. Don't shut them down when it's possible to do, and they just can't get along with people that are being no reason. That's, I think that's a problem. They, they gotta have culinary, they gotta have secondary, and they gotta have, with the dense stuff, they gotta have treatment somehow.
Yeah, the way the circumstances are right now, the water companies will have more control over these developments if they agree to serve, than if they refuse. That's, that's the hard thing, and it's, it's an emotional decision, not a logical decision, and I, I wish I. The water managers, I've had some good conversations with a couple of different water managers, they get it. But the boards think that they can use this as a tool to deny. And so these, as so long as that's the case, as so long as the boards choose to try and go that way, the developer will find ways to invest money however way he can to, and developer, I don't mean you just any developer, however way they can to get access to water lawfully, and that's where they just go make their own. That's why Snyderville Basin was the way that it was, that's why Summit County had to condemn all of those water systems. eminent domain took those water systems to create a water district. And if this keeps going in the Ogden Valley, it's gonna go the same direction, I can guarantee.
And then, and, and what I'm saying is, maybe that's not the worst thing to happen.
Actually, I don't disagree with you on that.
And, and that's the leadership that the county could employ, then try to provide guidance. If not, there's another way.
Just imagining, I'm imagining the county commissioners condemning two or three water systems to combine them into one if people are mad now.
So, and that's, to some degree, that's.
Hardly.
What's the dirtiest rotten scandal that exists in the valley today? Developer.
Oh. I thought I was gonna say my name.
Everything would be rosy if the developer didn't come in. Where'd you get it announced? Okay, but can a developer do anything with that land? No.
No.
Not available. And where does he get the land?
Yep.
From your neighbor.
Selling it.
Who wants to sell his land? And he's got a right to sell his land. So don't blame the developers, blame the constitution or something that says that. You can't deny people rights to use their land.
Well, also, developers take a lot of heat, but they're also putting in a lot of time, effort, and money to make things happen and change. And I don't think there's a lot of reward sometimes for that.
I don't know, I've seen some of their houses.
Here it is, there it is. Okay, so Commissioner Barber, your first note was, shoulds to shall, that, good, we'll make that down. Water system, so what I have here is, no new wells outside of an existing provider's system. Still don't know how to answer the question on if those systems refuse to play ball, not because, not because they can't serve, because they just choose not to.
That's a, it's a state run thing.
Just keep it simple. You gotta have culinary, you gotta have secondary, and you gotta have wastewater.
Shows how you're gonna get it, as long as you have it.
See, I think that's not consistent with the general plan, and if you got, the central plan is guidance, then you have to follow its primary premises, and I think the premise is that central services are why, or that leveraging into central services is why this increased density is allowed in the formerly non-dense areas.
And I can agree with you on a lot of points. I can just say, I have done a ton of water rights work. It's just a state-run thing, it's not a, it's not a county-run thing. I, I, I agree with you.
But it's a zoning issue. We're just talking about a zoning issue.
We can, and we can say it, we can say use best efforts as possible, but you, ultimately, you have to provide it. I'm all with it, and I think it should be one of the companies, and it should be the companies right up the, I totally agree. I'm just saying, we can't, I don't know if we can.
Can I hop in for a second? I'm Stephanie, I'm the economic development director for the county. I do a lot of my work out in the Westbury corridor, and one of the things that we do in the Westbury corridor, if we're dealing with building permits, as well as, if they're looking to do public infrastructure districts, I manage all the public infrastructure districts for the county. We have a provision in our policy, it's actually a policy, that they have to, before they get, before they get their permits, before we go issue them a public infrastructure district, they have to have a signed agreement from an existing water company for culinary, secondary, and a wastewater. And they have to have a, have a signed agreement from a wastewater, that not just says they're gonna provide, will serve, but also says that they will take the asset once it's built. So that's something that we do out in the Westbury corridor. I'm actually working on a PID up in the, in the Ogden Valley, probably won't be very happy about that. Got two in the pipeline, and they cannot create those without, without tying into existing utilities. And that is, that is part of the county's policy when it comes to public infrastructure district, and specifically with permitting processes. So adding something, adding language in like that, Charlie, is probably not out of the realm of possibility.
Yeah.
Because we do it for, we do it for other development scenarios.
Yeah, so here's, here's what I wrote, you guys tell me if this captures what you think is fair. If a local provider is willing to serve but cannot due to physical water or infrastructure constraints that the developer can resolve, then developer shall resolve the constraint and connect to that system. Is that, is that a fair way to say that?
Say it again?
If a local water provider is willing to serve but cannot due to a physical water or infrastructure constraint that the developer can resolve, then the developer shall resolve the constraint and connect to the system.
So the developer pays for fixing the problem?
Yeah.
So, yeah, as long as they connect to, you know, Eden Water Works or Wolf Creek or one of those.
So, is it even legal, that's what I was asking, Jason, is it legal to say, we won't approve a rezone unless you connect to an existing water company?
Yeah, so you just said.
Yes.
But, so, I mean, what I should do, let me give you the workaround, let me give you the workaround. So what I, because I've done this before, some county, they told me, I cannot go get water from this person. Okay, you know what I did? I went and got a water rig, I moved it, I got a well, I put it on that property, and guess who couldn't say anything about it?
Yeah, but it's, this is a rezone, right? So they're saying they're just not gonna prove the rezone if you don't connect to the system.
Not the permits.
Yeah, right, not a permit.
Yeah.
So this is just a legislative rezone. They can still deny the rezone if you don't connect the way they prescribe you to connect to the water system of a rezone, they can still deny the rezone.
Still say it, but if you feel from a legal sense you could do it, then.
Oh, yeah. That's your preference. Permit's a different thing. I, I agree, permit's very different. Legislative rezone, yeah.
Because the rezone.
That's what I'm saying, is, what, from, if we're concerned about the quantity, let's tie this to it so we can help from a planning.
Quantity of water?
Quantity.
No, like, so, we're concerned, I'm sorry, if we're concerned about quantity of the number of water companies up there.
Yes.
We just added one not long ago, or two, or two. Why don't we say, this is contingent on that?
And, and, I agree.
And not on creating a new one, because we don't need another one, we're already gonna have a problem as it is.
Okay, what happens if those systems choose not to serve, not because they can't, because they won't?
That's not our problem, I mean, that is. Well, you have to convince people to do things somehow. You're here convinced, trying to convince us to legislatively make a change, why can't you? Just, you, it's the same thing they have to do there. You get a different set of people on the board and get it approved. I mean, just like you would do if the county commissioner denies it, they'll wait till a new set of commissioners comes in to get it through. Why is it that we have to be like, oh, it's not fair? It's just the reality.
Yeah.
Why do we care?
Why do we care?
Why do we care if that guy put in a well? If he gets rid of the state, why do we care?
It's no different than, the challenge is, it's not that we care if he puts a well in, the challenge is because we, we're, we're already, we're staring at a problem of seventy different water companies, and you create another one. And nobody has the, there's not a consistent, there was a Liberty complaint on Facebook the other day about Liberty Water. Did you guys hear that? Somebody was talking about how that water ground, we got ten different water companies. Are we sure that they're all getting up to speed? I mean, I, I hope they are.
But they're state-regulated.
They do, but do you know if they do a really good job?
Livories, liveries and non-compliance, they don't have enough water storage for sure.
If they were all together in one.
State's trying to figure out how to.
Or maybe you'd be able to do better.
Like, yeah, somebody has to throw money at that system.
Just schematically, we're racing water, it shows the whole valley and shows everything connecting with, with.
But good planning would be that one, one group that, that can plan, you know, well, we're gonna replace this, we're gonna replace this, versus, well, that is on an island of its own, that has a well over here, that's piped in over here. It's better when the PID is, to be honest, anybody in public they have to serve, versus these private ones, they're just like, yeah, you smell money, I don't wanna do you.
Yeah.
And one of the things we're getting in the Westbury corridor is consolidating the utilities. I, I freelance for Little Mountain Service Area. We're renovating the system, and our intent is to work with the other districts and wondering to rule them all in the Westbury corridor with water, water and sewage. I, I freelance for Little Mountain Service Area, we're renovating the system and our intent is to work with the other districts and wondering to rule them all in the western corridor, uh, with water, water and sewer.
It's silly to have competing systems.
Yeah, that's something we're trying to do in the western corridor before it gets out of control and that's, which is why we're not really allowing new ones to be created, because we're trying to consolidate existing ones.
And sadly, it makes really big enough to create one water developer.
Here, here's what's gonna hap, what's gonna happen, you get all these different water systems, uh, not working with each other, not playing ball, not working with developers, not getting their systems improved by developers. Those systems will fail at some point in time and then the county's gonna be on the hook to find a solution.
So what I'm hearing is we can make a legal agreement though and say, hey, we're gonna make an agreement, we'll give you the rezone if you go connect to an existing system. Or, or maybe, or a system that's been approved, it's in the works or something to that effect. That can be an agreement, we can't tell them, you can't go get safe water, cause that we can't do, but we can say, great, you can go get it, but your rezon's not valid because you made a contractual agreement between county and applicant. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct.
Is that right?
That covers what I see.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, I'll tell you, Eden Water went down a couple of weeks ago. Do you remember the Osprey plant that's on a well? And my neighbors, when their wells grow out, they come over and get water from me.
And they should work with developers.
I agree.
Money to, but we also have to improve their system.
Get other wells online so that you've got.
Or the county should step in and.
But you look at my cell, they got a water.
Stephanie and I were talking about that a little bit earlier, but.
And there's six hundred residents.
We'll wait for everyone to be done being that for this, before we bring that up. Well, maybe the city will be a city and then the city can do it.
It's just bad timing to have seven.
Okay.
To put you at the mercy of.
I'm gonna do my best to put that into writing for your.
Work on that one, you understand that.
What's the next one?
Developer will not seek to change the height, limit it to forty feet, I got that right here, DA limited to forty feet, we'll put it in the development agreement.
I said, I said the parameters, so there's a lot of parameters, but I called out height specifically because we saw what happened.
Oh, parameter, okay.
The parameters, there's a lot of parameters in your code.
DA limited to development standards of the FB zone. Without special exceptions.
But is the idea here that, I'm just gonna clarify, is the idea here that if we, if you say, like, these are the things that you'd like to see if it's approved.
Correct.
From the county commissioner, whatever happens here is.
Rec, recommended by.
Recommend it, if we just say recommend it mildly, but we say, hey, we recommend it now, if you choose to do this, this is, these are some things we'd like. Can we, are we also saying if these are not meant, we'd recommend that you don't let this go, but, meaning you revert back to the original AV?
Yes.
Can we, can we do that, do you all agree with that, Lee?
Yes.
Same, there's, there's a misunderstanding, I think in the community, between legislative and administrative. Because they say, well, the county commission, it be followed the planning commission's recommendation. The county commission is way out of bounds, but no, they're not. Word gathers and facts and makes recommendations and no skin up our nose if they don't pay. We just put the facts out as we understood, so there's nothing wrong with that.
Okay.
So we gotta be careful here because we are just presenting our talk, the county commission, and they will do what they want.
Which by the way, anyone who disagrees with anyone else, it's just fine, it's a beautiful part of this process.
I disagree with you.
Well.
So that's part of the heart, that's part of the animation out there. Pretty rotten commissioners, they didn't follow the planning.
Guys ever heard the term subscribe outrage? And I don't wanna belittle people's anger, but the world we live in now, especially with the social inputs that we have, subscribe outrage, we are subscribing to the outrage that we feel. And not necessarily saying that the public is doing this intentionally or without merit, it's just. But a lot of the things, for example, that circle moved, you saw how quickly and defensive I got, one person claimed that that circle moved in a lawsuit, by the way, which, uh, I take personal issue with, with it, cause I think it's a little bit of defamation. It did not move, but they have convinced a lot of people that it moved, subscribe outrage.
I, I think from the legislative side, right, even the county commission should really recognize that we've, we've, you've kinda done a lot in three years. You've revamped this entire thing to have this form base that changes a lot and creates a lot of incentive in ways that people didn't know were there. So, um, yeah, I think that you subscribe outrage.
But there's also a chicken and egg scenario in that, in that we do have the developers coming and knocking on the door and we can, we try to, try to create a nice balance between, you know, what, how smart development and just chaotic development. So there really, there really is a.
My, my point, I guess to reiterate is.
A reason for the changes.
There's open fields in the CB two, there's open fields there, right? Yeah, there's not sewer, but this doesn't have sewer, so.
Yeah.
Somehow it could've gone there.
It's true.
Again, we're not talking about putting it there, we're talking about putting it in the open field.
That's.
That's just designated in the plan, in the previous plans as open field, the only reason that we're like, oh, hey, wait, is because we said Form Base Village is this big and our previous plan was this big. So like, say, I think you're going, well, boom, versus where before it'd be like, oh, hey, they're talking about rezoning to CB two in that field over here.
Yeah.
And people would be like, whoa, 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 I know what that means, that's, that's new, that's different, like, versus Form Base Zone, this plan goes through, nobody really pays attention. And then, then we have this guiding principle that we can slide it in under.
But that's a comedic thought in my mind, so if you think of somebody who isn't in the CB two but is sandwiched right in that CB two area, if they, if they came and asked for CB two, would be any outrage?
But it's also part of the plan though, cause I mean, it's already the designated plan.
Yeah.
We're talking, both these things that we've talked about are talking about taking that plan that's been there for a long time and going, this big, not this big, this big.
Yep.
And, and it's not because open space, right? It's because we chose this thing, and I, I think there's something else there, I really think it's partially cause it's like, well, this, the landowner didn't really know that he could've done all of this. And so this guy knew it was AV or CB two and he can sell it as that.
Yeah.
But I mean, that's the market, I don't, it's just a way, so like, say, I think it's hard when we move so fast.
Yeah, I, I a hundred percent agree with you.
I agree with that also.
Speed is a good reason, like, right time, right place is a good reason to deny a rezon. Uh, this is the right place, but not the right time, you can, you can easily say that.
I think it's easy to say it's the right, it might be the right place, but the wrong development, it might be the right place, but the wrong time, that's what I think.
You say, yeah, yeah, okay. Uh, let's see, um, okay, next one that we had for Commissioner Barber was prioritizing, uh, the attainable housing, affordable housing, moderate income housing, whichever one we choose to call it. And what I'm seeing here, Christian Barber, tell me if I got it wrong, number one priority goes to someone who works on that, in the Valley Fourth Polygraph.
Correct.
Number two priority is somewhere else in the valley.
Correct.
Number three priority is others outside.
Correct.
Okay, or do you wanna say, no, only if you work in the valley?
Well, you've mentioned in one of your presentations that in some county you had a very rigid and specific priority plan that you put in writing and that you utilize, right? Where, and what I'm saying is we need something like that and because of the Ogden. Valley proximity but differentiation, because of the recreation in the valley, because it's close, you're, if you don't do something like that and you have seventy units available. Over time, those seventy units are gonna be overrun by not workers.
Yep.
By not those who've lived in the valley and decided to, whatever, they're gonna be folks who don't meet, who meet the income requirement but like to recreate in the valley.
Yes.
Thousands of those people, I go to the gym in Ogden, it's no big deal to go back and forth for your job.
Yeah.
Living in the valley and working in Ogden is very normal.
Yeah.
I went to Ogden three times today, to admit that I did, whatever. So if there's gonna be workforce housing here, it's, it's socializing, the government's backing it, socialization, some people like it, some people don't, it's socialization. And if we're going to do it, let's do it right so the darn valley people who have businesses and struggle can get something out of it.
Yeah, and the general plan.
And it's not, in my opinion, it's not the billionaires who own the ski resorts, it's the Holdings family, they need workforce housing, let them build it like promontories do. The Holdings can afford it, the people behind Powder Mountain can afford it if they need it, so let's give priority to the grocery store people, the people who work at, you know, to the day-to-day folks.
Can you get that, can you get that precise in this HUD stipulation?
Yeah, so I, I'd like to speak to this a little bit, cause I wanna make sure that we don't do something that prevents, um, affordable housing from getting built. So, and this has actually kind of been highlighted.
I'll just preempt by saying a finish my thing, if you can't do this, then don't build it, cause it doesn't fit, in my opinion. Can, having affordable housing everywhere, in my opinion, is pure socialization. If it can benefit the economic vitality of the businesses in the valley, great, let's try to figure it out. If it can't, if it's just cheap recreation lodging for people, then don't do it, let's pay market rate. I paid market rate when I wasn't earning very much money and I had to drive well over an hour to work, cause I couldn't afford to live near where I worked. Now, now we have socialization all over the place, fine, if it can help the valley business people, let's, let's do something, but if it doesn't, then I'm totally against it.
I think it reduces traffic, all those things.
But let's add it, help the valley floor, not the billionaires, not their millionaire people that they're in business to serve.
I think the, so, and I, I've got two things to talk about here, I actually, one of the things I did, um, since the last meeting was go into, um, two of our Summit County projects operating without, um, any kind of resident preference, right? And these are, um, communities that have been around for fifteen and twenty years. And, you know, I should relate, so there are several different people that you, you end up going, having to go through whenever you're doing affordable housing, so one is HUD, right? And, um, and the Fair Housing Act, right? So anytime you, um, of course you're, it's, it's not legal to discriminate against protected classes. And the, if done the right way, a resident preference doesn't necessarily do that, with the exception of that third bullet point, I would never get, at least one person in a dwelling must work in the valley. HUD is gonna tell me that I'm discriminating against disabled persons who can't work or, and senior citizens who may want to retire. And, you know, it's important, so, and I think, you know, I, I wanted to highlight those particular, um, individuals, right? Protected classes within the projects that we have that don't have a resident preference right now, so, um, we have a project called Liberty Peak, it's located in Kimball Junction, right? In a place that's, you know, very close to Park City and Summit County amenities, but also would be very easy to, um, to get to a job in Salt Lake City.
Yeah.
Um, so that is a community of a hundred and fifty homes, um, mostly two and three bedroom townhouses, but there are some studio and one bedroom flats in, in one building there, so a hundred and fifty total. Seven percent of the residents there, um, are retired. Um, and I, what, what I don't have yet and I asked is how many of those residents started as, you know, employed in Summit County and retired at some point? And, uh, there are four point six percent, so about five percent of the residents in that, in that community that work outside of Summit County. So that, that, um, community was built in twenty eleven. Liberty Station, which is in Heber, um, that has fifty-six homes, uh, I think generally, uh, two bedrooms, one and two bedrooms. There are, um, six people in that community that work outside of Wasatch County, um, living in those fifty-six homes. There are four residents on social security that don't work and there are, um, two that are retired. And so I, I assume that the four residents on social security are probably disabled. So, you know, all of this is to say that still, you know, even after, you know, fifteen and twenty years, the majority of these communities, even without any kind of resident preference, are, um. Are still working in the county. Now, I myself, we, we know how to put together a marketing plan in such a way that it can meet a resident preference, I personally, I, I like resident preferences, right? Like, I, I think it's better for a community when, you know, you're living and working and that's a better environmentally, it's better socially. We do run into an issue with communities that are financed with tax credits, which in, um, this particular instance, almost surely would, right? Right now, um, a, almost any affordable housing community would, would not get done without tax credit equity. And there is an IRS provision in section forty-two which governs the tax credits, it says that these communities must be for general public use. Now, there are documents within HUD operating handbooks and there's a revenue procedure within IRS that seems to indicate that if HUD approves my marketing plan, then that's, it's non discriminatory, then that's deemed as general public use. However, tax credits ultimately come through Utah Housing Corporation. And so that particular community in Promontory, that is, I could start digging on that, um, tomorrow. It's done, it's permitted, it's designed, everything's ready to go. It needs, uh, tax credits to go, to make sense right now. And Utah Housing Corporation and, and those tax credits are given out next week. So I could be starting in two weeks with those tax credits. I didn't apply for them because Utah Housing Corporation said that regardless of what we found with the IRS and their lawyer telling us that they thought we had grounds for this. And regardless of the fact that we could get a marketing plan approved by HUD, their counsel wasn't comfortable that that was needing a general public use, so they weren't gonna approve those tax credits. So right now, I have that community just kinda sitting, waiting for either interest rates to come down to a point where I can make it make sense in another way. Or until we can convince Utah Housing Corporation to change their mind, or until we can get a state legislator to make it a state policy, in which case that, that's like an out. Within, you know, that's a very understood out within that IRS policy. So, you know, I think in general, anytime we have a resident preference, we always, you know, when it comes down to talking to county commission, when it comes down to negotiating, uh, development agreement. We're very insistent that we can't do anything that violates state or federal policy, right? So if HUD tells us we can't do it, we can't do it, if the state tells us we can't do it, we can't do it, right? And so that's, I, I, I do, you know, I realized when we got to the end of our discussion the other night, you know, there are. We, we feel a little bit alone with Utah Housing Corporation and we have a long history with them, I mean, in terms of, our, our company did two of the first three tax credit housing projects in Utah back in the eighties, right? So we're good partners with them, but right now we seem to be the only people pushing them to say that, we're hearing not just from you, but Springdale down by Zion, right? You know, a, a lot of resort communities and tourism based communities have these very same concerns and we think they're valid, but, um, affordable housing can't get done there without tax credits. And as long as Utah Housing is taking this stance, we're gonna have a problem until we get to the next part of the cycle where we have low interest rates.
So, you know, I'm not a socialist, so I can't support something that doesn't support the economic vitality of the valley. Because, you know, Ogden Valley and the relationship with Ogden and the rest of Leaver County is different than you're talking about Summit County as a whole. Going back and forth, there is, it's not that far, but there's an economic jump, when you jump, when you drive through the mountain, there's a jump in cost, for sure, in the cost of living up here. And everybody here pays more to live here, we make the choice. And some people can afford it and some people can't, socializing the whole thing so that a grocery store guy in Ogden can live in the valley, but a grocery store guy who works in the valley can't live there. And has to live in Ogden just because the other guy jumped the list somehow or waited on the list longer, that doesn't make sense to me personally. And I don't think it's consistent with the world, the way the general plan was intended with respect to this type of workforce housing. So I, I, unless there's some way to do it legally, you have to do it legally, you know, I unfortunately have to say that it's not gonna be beneficial to the valley. And from a legislative standpoint, it has to be beneficial to the valley to. And from a legislative standpoint, it has to be beneficial to the valley to support it. Providing cheap housing for people who live currently in Ogden or somewhere else just so they could be closer to the ski hill at lower, less money because they earn less. Well, that, you know, that's like winning the lottery. And I'm not in favor, you know, Utah's not a lottery state, so. Yeah, so that's my own.
You know, something that is right to Chris's point and not necessarily agree or disagree with what Chris is saying. I'm curious whether or not those who are in favor of incorporation in the valley are aware that the Fair Housing Act prohibits exclusionary zoning.
Probably not.
And so. Yeah, well, that, that's a problem. I'm not on that thing, but you're, yeah.
Right now, we don't have a lot of issues with exclusionary zoning because we have Ogden in the county. But once this city becomes an incorporated city, they're going to be more responsible for providing inclusionary zoning for affordability issues, equity, ADA accessibility.
Yes, that's all. You could also make the argument counter, but yeah, you're right. However, all of the people that live there, elected, make the decisions.
So that issue, I went to that meeting, sat there and listened last night, the state that state presented, and that came up a few times. Well, people against incorporation came to the microphone and said, you know, if you become a city, you've got to do things that you don't if you're in the county. And I do think there is a level of awareness there. And I think that, but, I think, I'm just saying what I think. If the people behind incorporation knew they had to do it, they would do it in a way that was a little bit different than is being done now. And I think they would like to see a mix of ownership and rental, probably. If I had to guess.
That makes sense.
And I think in Western Weaver, isn't there a big initiative for ownership of, of modern income housing?
Yeah.
And I think there's a, I think that would go over.
We even talked about putting deed restrictions.
Yeah. So I think that, there's a concept that in the valley, that type of thing in certain areas makes sense and would be well accepted and appreciated, probably.
So I've got a meeting that I've got to get scheduled with Liam to talk about that very thing because out west, just like you're saying, Weaver County doesn't want to be Davis County's affordable housing.
Right, right.
We want to be Weaver County's affordable housing. So maybe Ogden Valley wants to be Ogden Valley's affordable.
Correct. That's the perception that I got last night.
Good comments. I agree with you.
You were there, you heard what it was saying.
Yeah, and one of the guys was sad.
Yeah. Yeah, the idea that the grocery store guy lives down here, works down here, but he lives up there in the.
Okay. Is anybody aware of a situation where a grocery store or a business could say, I got to have these employees. I will go to this apartment house and see if I can subsidize personally.
Yeah, that's, that's called, that's called dear valley. They built their own for the same reason. Taos, this Taoski area is owned by a billionaire, just like Powder Mountain. He's owned it for a little bit longer and he spent a lot of money buying some old hotels and apartment buildings, fixing them up and using them for his staff to operate his business. And it's very, I think that's, it happens in Mammoth where I used to live, so that's typical.
Service, serving the businesses in the valley doesn't have to happen in government.
Correct.
It hasn't happened in private.
Correct. It's happening in dear valley.
That's what we tried to do in Nordic.
Well, and the developers that we're working with that are, that are doing public infrastructure districts or they're doing tax enforcement finance in conjunction with public infrastructure districts, sometimes we mandate that they have to build some type of employee housing. So I was working with Snow Basin, that was part of, and on our negotiations with Nordic Valley, that's also part of our negotiations. So, yeah, there can be a, a privatization of that as a release. But once again, that's going specifically with public financing.
But we can say, we're a reason the subject to.
Yep. We can. On the Nordic side of things, we did, we had some good conversations with the Nordic folks and Laurent. And one of the things that I was most, Laurent was mentioning, well, if I had a restaurant who needs to provide housing for employees, then they need to provide housing for employees and they need to regulate them that way. And I said, well, we just, we don't have a model for regulating that. I think it's going to be a little bit more challenging. Why don't you regulate that as the developer? And so that's kind of, we came to that conclusion in the development agreement that he will provide a certain amount of employee housing and he knows he will because he will have a contract with these vendors, concessionaires, businesses that come in and move into his community, that they will provide some financial reimbursement for providing that housing. So I think it's a good way to do it. I don't know how to make, I don't know how to make the valley market build houses for their employees and I don't know if I will.
In some ways, it's a collective where multiple businesses go in and.
Together.
Together and facilitate it. I know Powder Mountain tries to do it in Ogden with their foreign workers. As they come in, they try to put them up. They don't do a great job, but they try.
Seems like it'd be a little counterintuitive to economic development principles. It's just an additional cost for a business owner to bear.
Cost of doing business.
I would say if they can't, if they can't afford to put in a sewer system, it'd be challenging to.
Then they have, then maybe they shouldn't be in that business. You know, sewer systems, you know, sewer systems are a good example. They didn't exist, like, you know, right? The ground didn't come with sewer systems, so they got put in. Somebody paid for it. That's the cost of development, of living, of being a modern society is you have sewer systems. And it costs money. If you can't put a sewer system in, then I guess you can't live there.
Government required them to put the sewer system in. Why can't government require them to put that?
I mean, in essence, that, you could say government, but it's like, well, just be, like, you can look at a project, oh, like, it would be, you know, it'd be so good if I could go in and build a manufacturing facility right there. That's the perfect place. As long as they overlook this, 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 and this, and this, right? The, the reality is there's, there's contingents that, you know, we don't need to bear, we as residents don't need to bear the excess costs. So we should make contingencies based on, yep, you're going to do this, these are the things you have to do. So I don't, like I say, you're mentioning, I guess where I was getting that from is you were saying, gosh, it seems like not economical. Well, yeah, it's not economical if I have to subsidize your.
Yep, because that's the alternative, right? Is then, then everybody else has to subsidize it as opposed to the employer providing it.
See, this situation with the applicant, that's unworkable for a landlord to say, you go screen your tenants, they have to, they have to work here. First of all, financing won't let you do that. But how do you do it? I just got fired from my job. Well, you got 24 hours to get out of here.
But if the employer's doing it, different story.
Different story. That's a good point. I mean, see if I can do a little more research on that, figure out how we could make that work with, from the employment section or sector there.
I think the intent here though is we want people from the valley living there. They want to work in the valley, but just however it gets written, right? Would be our suggestion.
Well, and.
And I consider data.
Yeah, in practice, that's what happens. And I, I understand, like, we, you know, it's, especially in a community like this where, you know, it's the same as Summit County in that getting outside of those places is not as easy as you might think, right? And the reality is, is that someone who has a restricted income, right? Who makes 50% of the area median income. If they're living there and they can find a job that pays that wage here, then they've just saved a tremendous amount of money. What to them is a tremendous amount of money, not having to make that drive. And they've saved all that time. So even if someone were to come in from working somewhere else, right? And eventually, they're going to become part of that community and they're going to, you know, those are the type of employees.
They're going to send them to work in there.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, I think, you know, ultimately, where we're trying to get in this, in this promontory community is to say, hey, you know, we're, to, to really make this thing the most functional thing, to make it feasible right now, tax credits are the way to go. It also allows us to have a wider range of residents. And, you know, of course, at first lease-up, you know, where people working in that area are, and people working in Promontory, they're going to know before anyone else anyway. At lease-up, it'll be 100% people who work there because they're, they're just going to have, you know, advanced knowledge, whether or not we have that.
They'll write you a check and not, and then you wouldn't have to do tax credits.
You would think so, but we're still here.
We're not going to, but they, because they want to, they could.
Yeah, it, it, I mean, this is a big expense. I mean, valley market, you know, find a half a million dollars to get a land and all of the things involved in creating that housing, right?
Yeah. So I'll just say the reality, a reality, having lived in places where this exists is not everybody works up to their potential. And when you get into a sweet place to live in a ski town, you may just back off and not seek to better your income because you're getting by. You're living in a cool place, you get to ski or do whatever you do all the time and to heck with it just because. And you're not benefiting the, the local autonomy. You're just living in a sweet place near a ski hill or bike trail or wherever you want to live too. And I've seen it, you know, it exists, like, over, it's existed for a while in California. So there's a lot of realities that this valley will see once this subsidized, socialized housing comes to be. And my, my just, once again, concern, we can put all sorts of lipstick on it. If it doesn't benefit the valley in a rental mode, it shouldn't be there, in my opinion. And I think, you know, if you want to be benevolent to folks, fine. But that's not what the general plan says and that's not the intent of the general plan. If you can figure that out, Charlie. We're not going to figure it out sitting here.
No. I'll, I'll do a little bit of research and I still need to get into some better understanding of some of the requirements of HUD. But at the very least, we could make sure we got like a first and second tier. But if the rub is that at least one person has to be either working or whatever in the valley, maybe we can find some other solution. Your recommendation, county commission can be, hang on one second. Your recommendation, the county commission could be, hell no, don't rezone this, but if you do, do it this way, except for these, you know, you could like have a graduated set of recommendations so that they have at least options to choose.
And I would want to, to have the, the county commission thinks, thinks countywide, I think. And affordable housing, workforce housing is, you know, a feel-good, happy thing. It helps them get reelected in. And when the 90-some percent of the electorate hears they're doing more workforce housing, that's great for them, but not for the valley. And not for the grocery store owner or the hair place owner in the valley. So let's, I want this to think about what's good for valley businesses.
I think that's fair. I think you'd be a little surprised on the, how many people favor affordable or workforce housing. The statistics show that most people don't want it in their neighborhood.
Well, they don't want it in their neighborhood, you know.
They don't want the commissioners to make that decision, but, sorry, Janet?
Sorry, that's Commissioner Wombler to you, but.
Sorry.
This is all yours.
As you mentioned, doing some homework, I just wanted to put, that isn't Utah State working on this GNR program, Gateway and amenity resources kind of places, which the valley I think fits?
Yep, it does.
And they specifically are doing things like deed restricted housing and things like that, that help preserve these rural corridors and let them do things that wouldn't normally be allowed to be done.
What does that specifically? So Gateways Natural Resources Communities, I can't remember what the ACE stands for, but basically it's.
Amenity.
Yeah, oh, amenity, yep. It's the, the communities that are the gateway to the recreational lands that we play on. So Springdale would be one of the premier GNR communities.
Moab, things like that.
Yeah, Hurricane's becoming that quickly. Yeah, Hurricane is emerging in that respect. That's the name of the city.
Welcome to hell. That's how you get liberty.
Okay, massing.
So I want to do the second, one after that first.
Oh, okay.
That makes more sense.
Yep. All the structures adjoining or visible from Route 158 should be oriented with the front of each building facing towards the road. I wanted to hand out, just in case people are less than familiar with the form-based zone, I just want to make sure you guys have a paper copy that you, oh, thank you, that you can mark up, make notes, do whatever you want with it. Because that, right there, there's a couple of things that have been brought up so far. Is just.
They're part of it. Is the front facing the main road part of, is that already stipulated?
Hold on. I think it's, we've got to put it in because we throw all this out the window. You're mentioning to me, because we had 40 feet in here, but then when they put that in the development, we can go up to 50.
Oh, okay.
All the things. Key points, these are.
So make sure that the form-based, well, I think what we looked at here, right, was DA to limit development standards to what is in the form-based zone right now.
That's a good point. Yeah, like, it's like we spent all this time doing this and then people crossing came through and they said, that was amazing.
Wow. Oh, my gosh. I wish I would have got that on video.
I'm going to make sure and make specific.
Wait, wait, that double word.
Orienting buildings.
So I don't know if that's how you build your places or not, but I've seen these, some of these tighter, lesser developments where you drive by and all you see are the garages or the parking.
We don't do that.
But I just want to make sure that this isn't one of them if it, if it happens. And then the, the next one, I know that this language is in this. I don't, just, I didn't remember the thing, but I called it out because I think it's important. You know, lesser, you know, you're not going to be spending as much per square foot as the guy down the street is, maybe. But it, I still think it's wrong to have those architectural tricks. Because like those pictures I showed you in Ogden, those box apartment buildings?
Yeah.
You can make a box look nice or you can make a box look like a box.
Right.
With whatever those tricks are.
What's the next one? Sorry, which one are you talking about?
I'm talking right now about five or six together.
Oh, sorry. So the comment that was made in the email was, massing of the taller unit must be mitigated by not only allowing, by not allowing straight vertical structure walls without, straight vertical and horizontal walls without adequate breaking points. Material changes to minimize box-like appearances.
Sticking that terraces, all that kind of stuff. Yeah, yeah, good architecture. Yeah. Now, in affordable housing, well, it sounds like it's built in the most economical way. So it's good to bring it up because easy to try and blow it across as much as possible.
Uh, yeah, okay, hang on. So let's.
Good point.
Um, architectural standards.
And we're developing the look and feel of a valid future, you know? Like, we're trying out there, I think.
So is this what the streetscape is going to look like on Powder Mountain? What do you build?
I should have. Not Powder Mountain, right? It's a different.
That's old towns.
You're.
Well, I'm looking at the form-based.
Yeah, there's different, such a different architecture.
Should do the.
We actually have a whole bunch of options. We just proved new. Whole bunch of options.
So is the form-based for the applicant's property? Is they going to have the buildings right up to the property line?
For, for the vehicle-oriented commercial, it'll be right up to the property line. If you go to the multifamily residential, it could be as far away from the property line as five feet. If you get into the small lot residential, then you can set it back. I can't remember how much, I think it's 20 feet.
It's 20 feet, but, so edge it right away.
Yes, yep.
Making sure those are synonymous.
Okay, so another example of not being rural and open.
I don't know, you're going to go tight.
In, in the village, yeah. Yep.
When you're inside it, most setback will be off the main road.
Yep, yep, you got it.
So your, your property line or five feet or something?
Those buildings in Germany would rent this stuff.
Oh, yeah.
I have a single.
Two blocks in your house.
Okay, next one is in addition to existing wording with respect to UDOT, staff wording from the staff report on the same, requirements for the project. The project must include turn lanes off of 158 for each entrance and must include exit lanes, no matter what UDOT findings are. Let me just pull up. findings are. Let me just pull up this graphic here. So this is just the two-lane standard, but what I'm hearing here is if you've got intersections or entrances into communities, you'd like to see a left turn lane.
Yes, so off of 158, it should be the maximum turn lane scenario.
Okay.
And leaving development, there should be turn lanes in each direction.
There's an acceleration lane and a deceleration lane.
Oh, you mean leaving?
No.
I'm about to get onto 158, I want a right-hand turn and a left-hand.
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, you're saying, oh, all right.
Okay, let's get that in there.
So if, I, I can tell you.
Recording in progress.
Sorry, I wanted to leave it here so I could share my screen here. I don't have any way to compel UDOT to do anything.
You're right.
I mean, UDOT can take my children if they want.
I'm saying, I'm saying, there's no way I don't think, you know, UDOT's gonna allow this to be built without left turn lanes off the main road, right? That's just typical.
No, it's, they, they, they sound traffic studies.
Yeah, I think, I think the main thing they want to do is just limit curb cuts in general, but yeah.
If you pay for a turn lane, they're going to say, fine, wouldn't they? It's just a better traffic law. It, it, I mean, I don't know that, does it matter that you can't do Utah, and UDOT to do it? Or, I mean, I think what I'm trying, what I think here is, our rezone is contingent on X.
Is that right?
So if they won't do it, then, sorry.
Yeah. Exit turn lanes, left-hand and right-hand, or just exit turn lanes, left-hand?
Left and right. Because, you know, that's, going to a left and right, yet again, I want to clarify what I'm saying.
No one's going straight because there's no cross.
Rezone is contingent. Well, I mean, you should try to, my instance is like, I would, everybody else, you shouldn't, it, it, we're subsidizing it. If we, you know, that's my, that's the point, is like, oh, well, this would be great. Well, it's great for you, it's not great for me, who I have to drive past that. And if you, you don't get it this way, it's gonna make it much worse, right? We, you don't get stuck at that four-way all the time. And yeah, we put the roundabout, but still a lot of traffic, but if they don't widen it like we're requesting, we're all affected negatively, but, gosh, you guys are in great position.
I can almost guarantee UDOT's gonna require a center turn lane. And then the entrances onto Highway 158, they'll give us a little bit of deference on whether or not we want certain kinds of turn lanes. So we'll do that. The challenge we're gonna have with UDOT is whether or not they're comfortable with the main street style development. Now, they have had an initiative, a main, it's called a, a Main Street Initiative, to try and get UDOT to come to some terms, that communities actually want to be communities, not just byways. And, and so there are potentially some design standards that they have for us. That's one, I've, I've got a, a plug into their ear right now for us to have a meeting with Chris to kind of figure out how this is gonna look. I wanted to see how this would progress a little bit more before we had that full meeting with UDOT.
So I don't have a problem with any of it. I'm just saying that, like, once you hit that, that line, if, if they tell me I gotta do something, I gotta do it. If they tell me I can't do something, I can't do it. But, you know, I mean, and I, I hear what you're saying, right? Like, okay, if they won't let you do it, you can't do your project.
Well, if they can't, if they, I don't want the project to be unsafe. I don't want the project to cause backups. People going and coming from the ski hills and the golf course don't want to be impacted right adjacent to that busy intersection. And it would be dangerous, and you'll probably have younger drivers and, you know, all that kind of stuff that, it's a health and safety issue.
Perfect. And I don't remember if my staff report added in there, just wanted to pull this up here.
Can we envision the power, that'll be a four-lane road?
I hope not.
I mean, would the traffic, could the traffic require that?
You'd have to take advantage of the main.
So my, my answer to that would be.
That's a major drag to get up to Powder Mountain.
To get.
That's why.
Other access.
Yeah, if you, the county's working on another access to Powder Mountain, right? So, side.
Not the backside. I mean, that backside is, is a long-term solution as well, but.
Going out.
Evergreen.
Goes through, oh, no, sorry.
Not evergreen, is it evergreen?
Wolf Creek. It's, uh, it's the one, it's North Ogden Divide goes, it'll go straight across.
There's an alternative way to get to Powder Mountain Road.
Yeah. Is it, I'm sorry, what was?
But you're working on, another access, if you head up to Cozy and take the left.
Yes. Yeah, or, it's either that, or it's dropped down the back and connected to, what is that, Paradise over there in Cache County? So, yeah, that, there's.
Millions of dollars of lawsuits that are going on over there.
Right. I just don't see a lot of traffic coming up in that way, but.
No, it would be, it would be going up towards Cozy. It would be the easiest.
Yeah. Yes, as far as the four-lane intersection goes, there's been some ideas thrown out that one way to get people through that intersection faster is to have it go from two to four as you approach the intersection on all four legs, and then back into two again. So.
The turning and the through on the roundabout?
Uh, yeah, yep. So you'd have something like that, or you may just have two going all the way around the roundabout, which is gonna be fun.
For, for that to manifest, that has to go through WFRC's transportation plan, then it has to go prioritized, then has to go through UDOT, then it has to go through the legislature. And there's a lot of public input process and, and years and years of public input before those types of, those types of changes would be, would even be considered.
And one of the benefits that we have, in my opinion, I don't mean any offense to anyone in Region One, but Region Two and Region Three, they're, they're doing some pretty cool stuff, Salt Lake and Utah County, when it comes to innovative transportation solutions that better consider the local context.
Yeah.
Um, Region One, I think, tends to be a little bit set in their ways, and, and so it's gonna be a little bit of pulling with them.
It's almost.
Well, and so I was just saying, it's good that we've got a commissioner that used to sit in the legislature, has got some good connections there, because a couple of phone calls goes a long way when it comes to changing UDOT Region One's mind. And we've had to flex that a couple of times, so we might be able to get that.
As we, as we go to UDOT and, and meet with them and talk about what we're looking to accomplish here, is the goal to slow it down and make it a village road?
See any way to do it.
And like more multimodal with the children crossing? Or, I mean, because that's.
So that's gonna go to some of Janet's comments. And, and frankly.
Because that's not the turn lane, right? The turn lanes is speed, right? The turn lanes is, and again, I'm, I'm not against either one, but like, that's the.
The turn lane, you're giving one of the problems with this area for putting what you want to put there. This, this is a thoroughfare.
Yeah.
Also, you want to put a, a home, you know, we want to make this this, so that's what, that's, you're, you're exactly outlining the problem of putting this there, is because everyone wants to get Powder Mountain, so it's speed, but it's also, we're a homie community and we're walkable. So it's the problem we've been dealing with. Granted, John's idea is, in that fashion, a good, a good one to create a wonderful main street. Yes, that is it, that is, that solves that problem.
And stroke your brick and ridge and you can go down the walking district and the two-lane main street, or you can do the.
The back to right that way, now this is Park City, Park City's that way.
Aspen has a really good side street as well that gets in and out.
How you ride does a great job. Well, sort of, not too.
So the reality is that road's traveled by tourists who don't necessarily live in snow country with bad rental cars. And the unfortunate reality is, in, in income-modified places, you're not finding the best cars and the best tires.
Yep.
So anything you can do to mitigate issues, because I've seen it live, in person, bad cars, bad tires live on that road. And they'll live in that development.
Does UDOT control the bike lane as well? Is that kind of part of their?
It's in the, it's in there.
Bike path is a separate, that's that, you're talking about the bike path?
This one, yeah. It's, it's in there right of way. We, we built it, but they had to approve it. So I can't remember.
By the way, have you guys mentioned anything about how torn up it is, everybody?
We have, and I, I talked to the commissioners about it, and people are pretty angsty about it here as well.
It's fun to ride on a road bike.
It's fun to ride.
The one you know, by the trailhead, where it's still, they aren't even working on it, to put it back to where it was.
So, did they do something?
It's still running by, aren't they? No, they finished there. They haven't cleaned up though.
Here, I'll let them know it again.
Yeah, I mean, it's true. There's some, they're across the street, they're working, but down where it crosses the road, it's, I mean, they haven't finished it. They haven't, I don't blame them for coming, because it's all a big puddle of water.
I just thought about today, driving around Washington down there, looking at it, just thinking, you're gonna drive by it to walk.
Nobody started to smooth it out and land, fix it to how it can have the path.
So taking a look at the screen right there, this is a two-lane, let me show you the context of three-lane really quickly. Um, let's see, three-lane in this here. So we have adopted these standards, it's a little hard to see, let's see if I can put that in there. So two-lane and three-lane is very, fairly similar, with the exception of the center turn lane. And then once you get to an intersection, you've got a right-hand turn as well. And you can make the right-hand turn share the bike lane pretty easily in those cases, as long as you mark them appropriately. And Janet makes a really good comment about that. So we've already got this standard, this is the standard we're trying, we're gonna try and get UDOT to agree to, just for the non-residential, or the, the vehicle-oriented commercial side of it. So when we get back to the map, let's look at that map again. So we're talking about this leg here, was it time to, here, we're kind of.
We're just trying to figure out what points, just to help move it on as well.
Is that the purple you were talking about?
Yeah, the purple right here. Once you get past that curve, then it goes to a multifamily residential standard, which is just a little bit different standard. But for the most part, most of this should be designed to that three-lane standard. After that, it can go back to 50 miles, 50 miles an hour. So you're looking at about a block.
Well, it's 40 now.
Is it 40? Oh, okay. It's 50 down.
Let's go back to 50.
Whatever, whatever.
Coming down the hill from Wolf Creek in terms of 45 miles an hour, about maybe a hundred yards.
So, and that's it. We will need to work with UDOT to make sure we get it down to, right about the canal, a little bit after the canal, go down to 30, just like, just like you see right here. And then, once you get out here, just a little bit past where you go down that, that downhill where that blue is, down towards North Arm, at that point, I can jump back up to 45 or 55, whatever it is in there.
Listen for my sheriffs.
I see, I see your angle parking there, and I think it's Center Street and Provo. It's unworkable.
Is Center Street unworkable?
Is it Provo?
Unworkable or unpreferable? Unworkable or unpreferable?
Unworkable. I mean, that's a nightmare. They grow up with 15 miles an hour.
Nightmare to get through.
And you get, for anybody to get out of a parking place, he's gotta blindly back out into the traffic.
Yep. Well, it's 25th Street.
That's like 15 miles an hour, so you can sit back and out.
Yeah, but 25th, Provo Main Street, though, you, it's like, you kind of, it's one of the ways to get across town.
Yeah, I agree, so.
Yeah.
They got freeway entrance right there.
Yeah.
It's where it takes you there.
Just so you guys know, the angle parking is probably something UDOT's gonna make us yield on. Ogden City tried really hard to get the angle parking on Washington as well, and UDOT said, nope.
Saying they make you parallel.
Parallel. But the parallel one gives you a little bit more space for a decent bike lane and stuff like that. So the standard here, by the way, is to have a, a, above curb biking. And so that gives you not only separation above, uh, above a, above the curb, but it's also away from where the tire stop on that curb, right, from the, the parking, if there's 45 degree in the parking. So you get a pretty good buffer in there. Plus, the side of the road that might be next to a park, for example, can be like, uh, the pathway style. Side of the road that's along those buildings will have quite a bit of hardscape. You got 14-foot sidewalks, you got trees, and then you've got a, a bike lane over there. So we want pedestrian safety, bicycle safety, vehicle safety.
Let's say 10 minutes, and is there any other chapter items we can?
I, I can just, from my list, I'll tell you what's the most important to me. I'll just go to the bottom one next. So in one of the conversations I heard, it said that maybe some land rights, development rights could be acquired from a land trust. That is 100% contrary to the general plan. Once the land trust owns the land, those rights are retired. So I think anything that confounds the land trust process would negate this being, having any benefit to the county. So I think.
Right now, there is no process to allow a land trust to.
Okay, I understand that. But I'm just saying, anything, you know, any maneuver in that direction. So your wording could be that every TDR has to be an outright acquisition from a property owner, or something to that extent, just to make it clear that, you know, this sending units or, or sending areas of which are in the code, but doing anything to disrupt or dissuade the donations of land is, is contrary to the general plan.
So I guess, put another way is, if I hear what you're trying to say is, so in this development, in order for, if this were to get approved, do you have the ideal for this, for us to know, to be, to be out in the open where the trans, the light rights are coming from? So say, this is coming here, like, so if this is to be rezoned, we'd like to know that we're saving land somewhere.
Yeah. To be rezoned, it has to be an actual land-saving exchange, money for.
That's kind of the idea of clusters, you.
Yeah, that's the idea. It's never happened, maintain the space.
We're not taking it from.
It's never happened.
But not land trust.
Yeah, it's never happened.
It's PC.
But we want it to happen.
It's our private thing.
It's good.
Okay, so that was one key point. The other key point not discussed was what I mentioned before, if there are amenities on one, on both sides of the road, that would be attractive for residents.
Yeah, I want to catch this one.
You don't want kids running across the road.
One of the concerns that I had is you put a really cool park on one side of the road, and another really cool park on the other side of the road, they're gonna run across the road more, because they're gonna go back and forth. But if we've got safe crossings, user-activated rapid flashing beacons, I think is gonna be imperative here, especially where people aren't used to.
Slowing down Run 58 for this development for kids to run around is not conducive, I don't think, to the general plan.
In, in what way do you?
In that this develop, as I said before, my first comment was, I don't think this development that spans 158 is the right place. I think I would, could vote no, just because it's the wrong development for those two parcels.
Okay.
So now you're gonna slow the traffic down even more, just, you just came through the roundabout or whatever, now you gotta slow down again because there's a crosswalk and, because they have amenities, whatever, because the place is split, because it's a goofy place to put this development. And that's, you know, again, health, safety for everybody. You're gonna have collisions, rear-end collisions, customer, tourists coming through, they're not expecting that. Bad roads, bad tires, snow.
Yeah.
You know, so, again, not the right development for those two parcels.
And you're making it worse by putting high density on both sides.
Correct, yeah.
For the 10 people.
Correct. With reasons for the kids to run back and forth, creating and making.
Whereas in a different location, you're gonna run back and forth.
In the development.
Away from a.
Correct. Is your.
Okay.
Those are my, I mean, I had some other things.
Yeah, right.
The, the ratio of, yeah, I said the ratio.
More.
Affordable to, or unaffordable, what do you, what do you mean that?
I said if you start with a one ratio, you can't change, meaning.
Number of affordable to.
Correct.
Okay. I thought what you were saying, I just want to make sure that's.
And it also says, you know, I, I picked a number that's somewhat arbitrary, but I lowered, I said, there should be a maximum, I said 140, which takes some of the burden off of everything.
Yeah.
You know, it's still big. 140 is less than 180.
They're asking, what do you?
I don't know.
Chris, was there a number, a density number you were looking for specifically to have in a development agreement, or is that still open?
Uh, I think still open, right? I mean, a lot of it is kind of understanding all of these conditions, what, what comes through, and then, you know, looking to design within the street regulating plan to meet all of that, right?
Okay, perfect.
170, did you just say 180?
I, no, I didn't say 180, but I was asking.
But you said numbers in a range, I heard.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, again, like, looking at just 17 acres in the way that it's situated, and, you know, places that are good for density and places that probably need less or none, 150 to 170 is what we would expect to fit there and still get out the open space.
The last couple of seconds that we have here, and Janet, sorry, my computer died, so that's no longer pulled up on the screen, but Janet's got two primary statements here, or requests, and that is to make sure we do deal with the, with the walkable and the bikeable village concept, which you just saw in the street, uh, street design cross-section. Avoiding the large front-facing parking lots, which you'll see in that code, we're already regulating that you can't do. In fact, if you've got space to get.
Well, that was more for the commercial part. I know that this project has behind how, uh, parking, but it was for the commercial area.
Okay, perfect. No, I, I appreciate that. And then, bikeways, path, okay. So as far as parking goes, just so you guys know, from a form-based perspective. working with someone from back east on a big project that might be coming out west, and he's pretty good, knows his stuff about form-based, and he's challenging us on why we have minimum parking regulations. And I said, well, you build a village that works and is economically viable without the need for a car, then we can reduce parking requirements. But until then, everybody out here has to have a car.
And you have the community base.
Back east they go, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that east is...
Trains and subway and...
And not to drag it out, but I don't believe Weaver County's parking codes are appropriate for the valley. There's a not listing on Snowload and South down in the floor of the valley, as there is up here.
Do you, so as far as parking goes, take a look at the form-based code, check that parking section. If you've got troubles with what it says...
Yeah, I've said this before, that when you have busy weekends in the valley, it's different than anywhere down in Ogden.
Yep.
And when there's no overflow parking, like even crossing, there's no overflow parking, there're gonna be people parking in that neighborhood next door. I guarantee that, 'cause I've seen it.
Yeah.
It's just a, it's the reality.
And you get enforced that.
And Weaver Code, Weaver County having these, this universal parking ratio for the whole county doesn't make sense.
So, question as we, and then I'll move to your... If we, do we feel like we've had a doctor, we've spent over three hours working on this? I know some of the applicant ones, what I hear, do we feel like we have enough to let Charlie go back, present act to us to vote at the end of the month? Or do you guys feel like you need some time to process? And I mean, we talked about it a lot, and I feel like we just, and I, and I'm open to it. Do you, do we feel like we wanna recommend to staff?
So my, and I think that's a good point. My take would be that Charlie needs, and I don't know how much business the county has for the next agenda at the end of this month.
I don't know, he didn't. I know we've got this one, 'cause you did table it to a date certain.
We tabled it, but I'm just seeing this, and I'm like...
I mean, if it were tabled again in the next work session, you presented whatever we came up with here, we did the same dialogue rather than less time, would give me a better handle on it.
So if you're okay with this, Mr. Chairman, I'll put this together as well as I can in writing. I'll talk to Chris a little bit about some of the differences or concerns or whatever, to make sure I get you guys a full analysis. And then, at the very least, we have a discussion, we'll notice it, or we'll post it for discussion and possible decision. But you guys have a discussion if you don't...
We're in a public hearing, so we're in a public hearing.
So it could be tabled again.
You could table, you could table as many foundations as you want.
We're seeing what you put out, and then, but, you know, in the chair by chair meeting, we not, I want it to be a good outcome, so we want it to be a good outcome, or whatever the outcome is for the valley. So we wanna have the most information we have. I'm not necessarily agreeing with for the valley, but the best outcome, so that's why I bring it up.
Charlie, that loud?
Say it again.
When Director Grover asked us to put a date on when we were tabled to, is it gonna be okay if we table it again?
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, you can, you can table it as much as you want. The only caveat to tabling it is if the applicant, I'm gonna say this out loud with the applicant in the room, under state code, if the applicant in writing says, "I want a decision on this item", then the county has forty-five days to give a final decision. Most of the time when an applicant makes that request, they don't get what they're asking for unless things are really, have really been greased.
I know it'll be...
I doubt, we usually don't see that until things turn...
I hope that I was telling, hoping that...
So, so yeah, that is allowed, and also the tabling to a date certain. I'm pretty certain, I can check on this, but I'm pretty certain it's in your bylaws that if you table something, you have to table it to a date certain.
Okay, great, well, at least we can figure, I just wanna see what information comes out. We talked about it a lot, so I just wanna make sure we're at a good spot.
Just a quick question, I think we discussed this maybe years ago, when he proposed form-based. Can he do this development not using form-based?
He'd have to zone to a different zone.
Do we have a zone that would accommodate the density he's talking about?
Not the amount of...
So we... You'd have the zone down here somewhere.
Yeah, we do.
And that's just 'cause the density is so high, or what is that, what do you mean? We don't, isn't CB2 allowed?
Oh, CB2 is just commercial with no housing. CB2 doesn't allow housing. That's the reason why CB2 doesn't work for a form-based area, 'cause there's nowhere to swallow your animals.
That's where hotels, there's no...
I see all these apartments out west, there must be a zone that they're...
Yeah, so it's the R3 zone. R3 gives the landowner the choice on the development style that they're gonna do. So if they wanna do, R3 allows apartments, townhomes, all kinds of stuff, so the landowner gets to choose based on market rule.
So, we could do, accomplish the goal to the general plan, allow transfer development rights in.
With R3 zone?
If we're in R3 zone.
Sure.
We don't have to have form-based.
Correct. You could, there's nowhere in the...
Put one on the fuse, it's burning people up.
Yeah, I don't know if that's gonna solve the angst, but it may be worth a discussion.
Yeah, 'cause they're known, R3 is known, and form-based is unknown.
Yeah. And there's also R2 that we could use as well.
The problem is, we take it to R3, and they don't have, doesn't have these design standards in it, so you have to rebuild it, which I find so, it's so funny you bring that up, 'cause it's like, oh, great, we do that. Well, we spent all this time doing it, and we're so proud that we have the form-based even crossing, but we threw this whole thing out the window, like I said, when we did development, like I did before.
Part of the reason, one of the major reasons to do form-based is to get away from development.
Yes.
And it didn't work. So one of the major reasons for form-based is gone. And one of the drawbacks of form-based is, and I think, you answered my question, does this constrict a developer going into form-based over what he could do in an R3 situation? Say, well, we can work with a form-based, I don't want to put words in your mouth, correct me, but, yeah, it does constrict a little bit. You might have a better plan that's gonna work better, but the form-based makes you do it a little bit different than we would like to do it. Is that correct memory of what you stated?
Yes, and I think specific to this one is the street regulating plan, right? You know, I mean, that's, we've done work in other form-based zones that are still pretty specific to kind of the massing and, yeah, that neither good nor bad. In some ways, I might be saying, it might be better for me, right? You know, like, I think the project would be better for me if I wasn't having to put all these really wide roads through it that were kind of cutting straight through and causing problems with the neighbors. But at the same time, your job, and Charlie's job, is to think about the people around me, right? And the center in the long term, and I get that too.
And that's, like you said, it's a problem in a lot of ways. So I guess what you're saying is not having this. This, one of the biggest problems with this is this, is what you're, I'm hearing from you.
Well, I've always had that thought.
Always. The problem is, so what I, what I can do, and what I, like, I think what I'm gonna stand up for Charlie here, Charlie, not Charlie, but the form-based section.
It's not my plan, it's this.
This, this puts out, this is what we want, right? You know what I'm...
Who are we?
I'm not disagreeing with you, but this puts out and says, hey, look, this is what we want. Whether it's good or bad, this is what it puts out. And then, the problem with that is there's still so much unknown. And what you said is, well, the road maps are there, where before it was like, oh, hey, we know that this person's AV3, and we won't know if they... So if we just go to form-based, right? It's like, it could be, it could be built like this. Well, this is a lot to try and figure out what it could be, right? Where he can come and say, here's my development, and I can sell it to you here. This is what I wanna build, and we can go, if you build that, we'll rezon it. You know what I mean? And if you don't, then it'll revert back, where if you say, I wanna do form-based, we go, ooh.
How do I do that?
Well, it could be any of this, and we really don't like this combination or this combination, but we left it in there because of this and this. So that's the uncertainty, and certainty causes fear, fear causes problems.
That's what I'm saying, worms. On the, on the development agreement side of things with form-based, the goal was to create a code that individual small landowners can use. We weren't anticipating big developers with big tracts of land, and so maybe it's not, so right?
Which that's, that's a problem.
Regulating plan for small guys.
It's also another, that's reverted back to the comments of, we're not developing form-based in the form-based where it was intended. We're saying, well, hey, we're gonna do it all over here, here, even though I know it's kinda like, well, it is there, but it wasn't where it was intended. It was like, we know it's gonna be where those open lots are by the car wash, nobody's wanting to build there. So...
And one word I'll say in defense of architectural standards and the way it's written is, if you have a better idea, you can bring that idea forward, right? Those are all tried and true, tried and true standards.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
What happens, so I guess, and I'm not saying you do, what happens if we get lax in our development agreement now because we're not doing...
No, I, development agreements shouldn't, this shouldn't, this shouldn't... But if you want to propose a different architectural standard, I think you can do that.
But then we would have to create it in this, right? That's the way it's written currently.
Well, and maybe, and maybe that would be over time, maybe there's a new design standard that comes and gets put into this. If the scallywag people come and they wanna pirate the theme, I hope we say no. Place gets worse and worse each week. I can't believe the county lets them do what they do.
I haven't been up there after the...
Oh, you should look at it.
It's a great burger, though.
But, you know, and I use that as an example, but if you go along that whole thing, area, there's buildings there that aren't gonna stand up all the time, and they're gonna, look, worst of worst.
There you go.
Anyway, form-based...
So Charlie, you're gonna write those up and send them out?
Yep. Yep, thank you. I'll get them up and get them ready for you guys.
We need a motion to...
All right, we'll adjourn it, then we can... Whoever wants to make one.
Thank you so much for letting me participate tonight. Housing is starting to fall into my realm, and so I'm trying to meet with the different commissions, get to know you guys a little bit better. I appreciate you letting me chime in occasionally.
Really good discussion, by the way. I know it's long and laborious, but it's nice to hear all the different opinions.
Thank you.
Good luck making it to...